Is called to order. I believe that we have everybody in attend-- we do have everybody in attendance. If you'd take note of that, please, and then we'll move right on. Can you introduce item number one for us, please?
Item one, discussion regarding property located at the southwest corner of 91st Avenue and Cardinals Way.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you as always for your time. Today, we're going to kick this off regarding a discussion on the, what we have called the black lot for a number of years. And so I'm going to walk you through this, but this has really been a team effort by our entire economic development team. I do want to call out specifically both Brian Friedman and Lori German on this because they put a lot of extra time into it as well. We also have, we'll be making a recommendation here shortly in terms of next steps, and we do have a guest in the audience, which is Sharon Harper, and she's the CEO, principal for Plaza Properties. So I'd like to kind of go through what we think are our next steps. So today, what I'd like to cover in this part of the presentation, I'd like to give you a recap and a history of the site that we're going to be talking about. We're going to also discuss kind of some of its current obligations that are part of this site. We're going to transition into what we think are some potential development opportunities for the black lot. We will then also discuss the company that we're recommending or will be recommending that we would enter into a, an agreement with, and then we'll, of course, be looking for consensus from the council. So just to remind you again, this is something, I know this is an area you're all very familiar with, but this is our greater sports entertainment district. You can see in the green, the large block there in the green is State Farm Stadium, and we're going to be talking about the black lot, which is immediately south on Cardinals Way between 91st and 95th. And kind of zeroing in a little bit more, you can kind of see its adjacency to the recently announced Crystal Lagoon project. And so that's immediately to the, to the west side of this site. And you can kind of see, there's really two elements to that site. There is the Crystal Lagoon project, and if you've driven down there in the last four or five months, you'll notice that a rather large multifamily project is already out of the ground and going vertical, and that's the very southern part of that site. In terms of the, again, the black lot, this is, again, it's proximity to the area. What we've identified here are three colors. The land in green is currently owned by the city but undeveloped. The area in yellow is the paved improved portion of the black lot, and that paved area represents 4,001 parking spaces. And then the item in there, I'll call it orange, is the, is the private property that was exchanged with the Bidwell family. You'll notice there is an easement going up through there. That easement then provides access to the parking area, to the bridge or tunnel that goes under Cardinals Way and the bridge that goes over the channel. And so those are the, kind of the way this thing lays out. If you'll notice that the parking area that's been improved is about fourteen point, excuse me, thirty-four point five acres. The Bidwell family's parcel's approximately nine acres, and then the green represents twenty point four acres. And so all total, it's just under sixty-four acres in this site. And this is a little bit, a little bit closer look on these areas. Now, currently, the city many years ago put in place zoning and entitlements for this piece of property. It was called the Centrata PAD. Again, this precedes my time here as city manager. And what you'll find is there's quite a bit of entitlements already existing on this site. It's in our general plan, and it can accommodate amongst other things, this is not the complete list, but it can accommodate hotels, also office. And if you'll notice, the office is up to 25 stories. So they were, the previous entitlements that the city envisioned as part of our general plan was to have quite a bit of density and intensity of development on this site. But also can accommodate restaurants, multifamily residential, live entertainment, which could both be venues indoor and outdoor, obviously retail, cultural institutions, and could accommodate schools and higher education. So it's a fairly wide-ranging PAD, and as we looked at this, we, we believe that this existing PAD would have, you know, really all the entitlements that we could ever envision being needed if the city were to move forward with redevelopment of the site. I'd like to kind of go through, this is a very unique site. I would say we own property throughout the, our city limits. We have some that are very, very important parcels, but this one is very unique in terms of its strengths, and I want to kind of walk you through each of those areas. First of all, location. It is, it is literally within, you know, less than a quarter mile to the freeway, one of our major thoroughfares here. It has great visibility in the area. It's served by, you know, direct on-ramp onto Loop 101, and then it also, of course, is between Camelback and Cardinals Way, which is now with the new extension to all the way to Bethany Home Road. It has excellent location regarding east and west. And so again, that freeway access, we think, is very valuable as well. As I mentioned earlier, as we know, we just noticed the Crystal Lagoon Island Resort is going in. This is going to bring a tremendous amount of attention to this part of the, of the entertainment district, and, and we think that's a strength of our site, that it's going to get a lot of, a lot of visitors and generate a lot of activity. Another advantage is that we own this site, it has the zoning in place, and it's already assembled. So often, the challenge in getting large development sites ready for redevelopment is it's hard to assemble all the property. All it takes is one or two people to be holding out. In this particular case, the city owns a very large amount of the sixty-four acres, and it's already assembled, and it all has all of the existing entitlements we would need. It's also has utilities. One of the areas that we're having to work through with the vision for area is that this area currently is underserved in terms of, of water and stormwater and sewer. That's not the case here with the black lot. In this case here, we have, we have excellent infrastructure. When we redid the Cardinals Way, all that water was stubbed out, sewer's been stubbed out. We're close to the Shrog Line on 99th, so it has excellent utilities in the area. The, the power in the area is oversized for the entertainment district, and so that's, we think, is a strength. I mentioned earlier the PAD entitlements. So again, it was already envisioned for a fairly high intensity of use, and those are in place. We think this kind of creates the anchor to the, the sports entertainment district. The sports entertainment district, as you know, is, is thriving. We were tracking, and on, on an average day, we're tracking between 20 to 30 projects that are in the, some form of, of development, and this would be the major anchor on the south end. And then I think really important is that we, one of the strengths is the city of Glendale, as all of you are aware, because it's been your, under your vision and direction for economic development, the city has a tremendous amount of momentum in the marketplace. We are attracting interest from organizations, companies, developers, end-users at a, at a rate that we haven't seen, at least during my five, almost five and a half years here with the city. And so we think every one of these items are, you know, would help us kind of make the statement that this lot is, is an important asset and is worthwhile to explore and to discuss in more detail. Now, with that said, it does have a couple of challenges, and so, so I'll walk you through what we kind of see as some of the challenges for this site. The first one is, is the existing parking commitments with AZDA and the Arizona Cardinals and with the Crystal Lagoons. So the major one to be kind of locked in here is that we committed 4,001 parking spaces to State Farm Stadium, and they have the right to these parking spaces under a, a number of prescribed circumstances. One, all NFL events, so preseason, regular season, and postseason games, they have the right to, exclusive right to use that parking for those events. They also have the right to use the parking on what we call, we've defined as mega events, and mega events in our agreement is defined as any event with an anticipated attendance of approximately forty thousand or more attendees. And so under those circumstances, the AZDA and the Cardinals, State Farm Stadium have the right to that. So that's a, that's a challenge for this site, so you can't, we couldn't go in tomorrow and, and develop the entire 60-acre site because we would be, we would be violating our agreement with regards to the parking commitments. The other thing, challenge is that our agreement also calls us, for us to maintain and to keep up the, the parking area. And so that includes, you know, we have a utility bill that we pay in terms of, you know, any kind of landscaping costs, any kind of lighting cost to power up. We maintain all that. We occasionally will need to restripe the area because the area is, you know, stripes will fade. And over time, we'll need to make asphalt improvements and repairs, and then over a longer period of time, we would probably need to go in and potentially repave the area. Just the nature of asphalt here in Arizona, it does require, you know, fairly continual maintenance. So we see that as a challenge because there's no identified revenue source for this, for this parking to offset those costs. So any, any amount of money that we would go to expend on keeping up the lot would be coming, would be a direct, general fund payment, although there, there are some minor exceptions to that. The other thing is that we, we believe that to, if you really wanted to utilize this site with more intense development, it's going to require an upfront investment of the city to, to maximize its value. So that's obviously a challenge because it means, what it's going to mean potentially is we would need to spend money to make money, but that has to align with other priorities and, and values and circumstances that the council sees in terms of how you do your budgeting. Another challenge is it's, it is adjacent to a county residential island, immediately to the south. Now, when we developed the black lot initially, we did, we put in an extra tall fence and, and really went out of our way to help keep this project positive for the residents to the south. But anytime you come in with a more intense use than what we're currently using it for, there's the potential of us needing to work with the residential community to try to mitigate any, any actual or perceived impacts. The other thing is that with many land, you can, you can just develop to the best use. You can say, all right, well, right now, multifamily is really popular, so just sell it because we can get the most amount of money from multifamily. In this case, because of the importance that the council and the city has put on the sports entertainment district, we think one of the challenges is that as we attract developments to this site, if we were to develop, we can only really pick out those types of uses and end-users that add value to the overall sports and entertainment district. So we, for example, what kind of kickstarted this off is that we know that if, if we could attract Class A office space, that the benefit to the restaurants and retailers in the Westgate area would be significant because those thousand to two thousand, three thousand workers that could be on that site could go for lunch or after work and visit Westgate. So we see them having, adding benefit to, to the area. On the same token, if we do a residential development, those become additional wallets that can spend money within the sports entertainment district. We think that would add value to it. But there would be potentially some types of, of development that comes in that really doesn't strengthen the sports entertainment district. So that means you're going to eliminate those kinds of uses and really focus only on those developments that add value. That will be a challenge. Again, we think it's something that can be overcome, but we did list that as, as an overall challenge. So really, the question that, you know, that we have with the council is, is, does the city council see enough merit in pursuing doing some type of more intense development over the next multiple years, there's no set timeline for how we would do it, recognizing that we have to meet our obligations, and we would need to do it in a way that provides a good rate of return, however we want to define that, back to the city? And so if, if the answer to that question is that we think that, and we being the city council in the city, believe that there is enough there to expend additional energy and effort on, we believe to be able to maximize the potential of this site, that we would want to engage the, the professional services of a developer who has experience in this type of, of development. Now, as a city, we build things. I mean, we, we're, you know, we're building a large amount of money going into the wastewater treatment plant. But as a rule, we've not played a, in a developer role, and a developer role is entirely different than just going and constructing a building. So we think that there's a whole set of skills that we would need to have on our team to be able to maximize going forward. So I'd like to walk you through kind of what we think are the types of skillsets we would be looking for. First, we would want to have somebody in our team who's experienced in master planning large commercial sites. Again, it's one thing to plan a one-acre lot for a single building. It's entirely different to put together a 60-acre site that may have a variety of uses, that have variety of demands on roadways, infrastructure, easements, et cetera. So we would want somebody who, you know, can demonstrate and has had experience in terms of providing master plan elements. Now, there's a lot of architectural firms that do essentially master planning, but that's as far as it goes. So there's other skillsets besides that. And so one of them would be, is we would think that the, on our team needs to be somebody that not only knows how to master plan a large area, but also is experienced in conversant in vertical construction, especially with large commercial-type construction. Another element, because we're going to likely retain ownership of this land, that we would want somebody who understands the complexity and the statutory requirements for entering into public and private partnerships. So those P3 partnerships are, are, we use that term a lot, but they're very challenging to execute, and we think that having somebody in our team that has got, has already has experience in understanding kind of some of our statutory limitations, some of our challenges as a, as a government, would be a big benefit. We also believe that West Valley is a little bit different than, than other parts like the East Valley, and that our marketplace is different, and we think there would be great benefit of having somebody who understands the city of Glendale and the West Valley market. How you would attract development to this site is going to be different than somebody attracting to Rio Salada in Tempe. There are just different circumstances, different, unique characteristics of both those items. And so we think having somebody who already understands the advantages, because West Valley has a lot of advantages. They're not always easy recognized, in my opinion, by the development community. We also know that what's going to be happening in the next five to 10 years in West Valley is going to be significant. But oddly enough, not every developer or investor in the region fully, I think, understands that. I think they're only looking at it in a very short window. So I, we want somebody who has a great ability to look long range, understands where the market's going, both not only here in Glendale, but within the West Valley. Obviously, if we're going to bring a partner on board, we would want somebody that's, that has demonstrated the ability to put financial resources together, especially when it comes to vertical construction, and has shown the experience to deliver actual projects. Again, very easy to talk about things you want to do, but the rubber really meets the road is, can you then, can you show a portfolio of developments through a master planning process, especially with using public-private partnerships? Do you have a portfolio that actually demonstrates you've done that? The, the final one is a little bit unique in that, in looking at this, we could certainly develop the city-owned portion. Let's say that the council wants to move forward with, with some type of an appropriate redevelopment. We could do that in a vacuum and not be concerned about the nine acres that is anchored on the northwest corner of the site. But in reality, because there could be ways to do cross-parking agreements and other types of easements, it would make sense that if we really have a big vision for the black lot, you would want this, you would hopefully want to have the private owner of the land be, at some degree, a participant in the broader vision. In other words, ideally, it would be great to have that property be, in terms of the uses. You know, are the uses consistent with what our PAD is? You know, not to, not to disparage a, a gas station, but what we probably don't want is a QT on that corner, and yet, the, at the end of the day, that would be an allowable use under the existing PAD. So we wanted to, we think having somebody in our team that can work with the, the private property on the northwest corner and to be able to get them on board with the broader vision, we think plays a lot of benefit for this site. So with that, then, we've tried to see who, who out there we think meets those, and so we, we want to really kind of talk a little bit about the Plaza companies, because we believe that the Plaza companies meet all of those criteria that, that I just kind of went through in terms of the skillset that we believe should be on our team if we choose to move forward. And so Plaza was, was formed in, in 1982. Their headquarters is here in the West Valley area, and as, as you can read here, you know, they've really done some amazing development during that period of time and have an incredibly impressive track record. They are very strong on the public-private partnerships, and, and really, some of the projects they've done are, are being, have been recognized throughout the region as some of the best examples of that. The, the impetus behind the Plaza team is Sharon Harper, who is the CEO of Plaza Properties, and again, extensive background both in master planning, in leasing, in vertical construction. They have almost 10 million square feet under, under their umbrella that they've developed here in the Arizona area. Beyond that, she also is very well-connected within the region from a civic responsibility. One thing I really love about the Maricopa County, the, the Greater Phoenix area, is that, is even though we're a large city of, you know, you know, pushing five million people, to a certain degree, it's a really big, small town, in that the people and the civic leaders and the relationships are there, is that if you can build up those relationships, you can get a lot done because the umbrella's not so wide that you have to know 100 people to get something done. What's impressive about Sharon is that she's, has invested her time on, to the benefit of the civic community, and so she's on the GPEC Board of Director, including their executive leader, or executive committee. She's on the Arizona Commerce Authority. She's, she's in the Greater Phoenix leadership, and she was also appointed by Governor Ducey to be on the Zan Harrows, which is a very targeted business leadership group. She's also been an honorary base commander for Luke Air Force Base, and just most recently, she was just named, recognized as Woman of the Year by Valley Leadership. I'll walk you through quickly just some of the projects. You've all had a chance to tour the Skyson project that's indicated in the lower left-hand part of your screen. That's kind of the iconic shade structure that's part of that development that, at full buildout, which is not too far down the road, is approximately 1.2 million square feet of development in a site that at one time was proposed to be the home of the Arizona Coyotes, but more importantly, was proposed to be a Walmart area. And so now, today, of course, this is a great, a great job creator and has had a great impact on the, on the area. A project is currently going right now, which is the Park Central Project, which is a conversion and readaptation of a, of an old, one of the oldest shopping centers in the state, and it includes a partnership with Creighton University that was able to bring their medical school to bear. Now, for those of you who are not familiar, Creighton is, is in the state of Nebraska, and so again, through the relationships that, that Sharon has, she was able to bring Creighton to the Valley with very, very much needed type of medical research and, and medical services. And then just kind of in the upper right-hand corner, just an example of one of the projects she owns here in, in Glendale. This happens to be the Arrowhead Executive Center. A couple of other things that, here's some more of the different projects specifically here in Glendale. I mentioned the Executive Center, but we also have the Arrowhead Professional Center, which is about 70,000 square feet. She also manages the Arrowhead Hospital Campus, which is about 35,000 square feet, and Medical Plaza Two, and the Creekside Projects. Those all are combined over 120,000 square feet here in, in Glendale. So, so here's kind of what your team's kind of take on it is, is that, one, we believe this site holds tremendous promise, even with the challenges that we have in terms of providing parking to meet our obligations with both the Crystal Lagoon, which is 2,600, and the State Farm Stadium, which is 4,000. Now, remember, the 2,600 for the Lagoon project is, they don't get use of those projects during stadium events of mega events or NFL games. So it's, it's not an addition to the 4,000, but it's part of the 4,000. So we think the uniqueness of this asset says we should probably treat it a little bit differently, and we should manage the, the, where we, where we go with this project a little bit differently than, for example, just, you know, waiting it out. And so this is something we've looked really carefully at for a couple of years, and we believe that if done correctly, that this is, can be an asset that really makes a statement development for the city of Glendale. And by that, it's going to require some additional, additional level of, of attention, which is why we'll be, you know, recommending, bringing on, onto our team expertise to help us recognize that, that, those unique situations. We also believe in looking at this, that, and I want to kind of underline the strategic investment, but if we make strategic investments in this site, we believe that we can achieve a strong ROI over time. Now, let me, so often, and I, we talk about this with our team, and I, what I've tried to do, as I've segwayed from the private sector into municipal government and into being a bureaucrat over the last 13 years now, is I still try to treat money and assets as if, as if I were doing it either for myself, or if we were a board of directors and you're my business partners, try to look at it from what really makes sense for the people who have the responsibility for the asset. And so when I, when I look at this, I use the example that if we do nothing on the site, what I do know is that we will just, over a period of time, we will just, we'll have a responsibility to expend money, but there'll be no direct revenue, no new revenue being offset to kind of come in and, and take over that. So that's not a great picture, long-term, to say, well, what we're going to do is write checks out, but never see any new revenue. So from that perspective, if, if we were all business partners, what I would propose to us as a, as an organization is say, let's consider making strategic investment into the site, as long as we can demonstrate that we can provide a return on that investment down the road. Now, that's really when you start talking about the role of a developer. That's really what they do, is they take an asset in its undeveloped state, they make investments into the infrastructure, getting the appropriate entitlements, all the different things with that, and then once they make those investments, the total value of the asset should now exceed greatly the, the amount of money they invested and the amount of money they acquired the asset for. So there, you know, a developer understands that if you do it correctly, when you invest money strategically, it will lead you to a strong rate of return, versus we could always go out and you can go out and you can buy a commercial project, for example, and not make any improvements to it, and just get your lease every month, but you probably won't ever add to the total value unless you do some level of redevelopment. In my experience, again, going back to my background, when I purchased the building that's now called the Landmark Convention Center, it was in quite a bit of disrepair. We bought it knowing that we would have to make a significant investment in the redevelopment of the site. In fact, in the first five years, we spent almost five times the acquisition cost we put back in our personal funds back into the building, but when, but we were able to have a successful business that generated revenue, and at the end of the day, when I went to sell my interest in it, which I did eventually, I was able to obviously, in my opinion, get, you know, an excellent rate of return on that investment. And that's kind of what we're talking about here, is that we believe it's worthwhile for the city to pursue moving forward with, looking at this site to see, can we accommodate our requirements for parking? At the same time, can we find a way to do vertical development that adds to the entertainment district, adds jobs to the area, and more importantly, adds a rate or return on that investment? The, so, part of this, then, is, we think, then, if we do this correctly, and if you, if we bring the right strategic partner on, we think it really sets us up in a very strong way to maximize that. Finally, you know, one of the other items here, we want to make sure that our partner can not only attract private investment to the site, but has the capability of developing themselves on that site. So, in the case of Skysong, Plaza Properties both built and constructed and used their financing to build some of the projects, but there are certain elements that were, that where they just act on behalf of the city of Scottsdale, and they facilitated a land lease, and then, it was private investment dollars that built some of the buildings that were there. So, we think that if we pick out the right partner, we can have somebody to help guide us through the potential developers that may be coming forth to build a single project, but also has the ability to build forward. And then, I think at the end of the day, the most important thing is, we want to have a partner on board that can capture a big vision. You know, we, I would say that if we move forward with this lot, we should set the standard high about what it can be, which means it may take a little bit longer to get there, but whatever we do here, it should be something that when we're done, we can really say that it was an additional catalyst for strengthening the sports entertainment district. So, our recommendation is to, is to get feedback from the council to see, are you, are you comfortable with the staff continuing to explore ways we can maximize this opportunity? And if that answer to that question is yes, then what we would like to do is to bring back, at a future council meeting, a professional services agreement entering into with Plaza Properties, where they can come on board and begin to be that additional expertise that we need to have to develop this site. That agreement won't have any financial considerations to it. What it would do is, it would set up the relationship as being our, you know, kind of our consultant, and then, anytime we were to spend any level of resources, we would bring that back to the council and discuss that with the council and kind of give you the rationale, and we would break it down into really a series of individual addendums that we think logically lays out for time. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, we do have Sharon Harper here as well, and along with Brian Friedman is here, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Questions from the council? Okay, go ahead.
I wasn't going to go first, but okay, I will. Mr. Phelps, you mentioned in your presentation the idea of retaining ownership of the land. Is that the, is that the concept of the city basically retaining ownership of the entire parcel? I honestly see these as two separate concepts, because one is encumbered by the parking agreement and one is not. I mean, it's one parcel, but the 19.7 acres is, nobody's parking on it, it's not part of that agreement.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachoff, this, certainly, the city council has a number of options for how they look at this site that we'd be glad to kind of explore. You could potentially look at just doing some type of a land transaction with the undeveloped 19.7 acres. We would have to work with Vicki and Lisette through kind of our, could we have debt, you know, we financed this with bonds, so we'd need to go through and do the analysis of what the steps would be. That could certainly be an option, so the city could say, we're only interested in pursuing the approximately 20-acre undeveloped site. You could also say, we could, we know we want to maintain ownership of all of it, and maybe just only enter into land leases, or you could do a hybrid. The hybrid could be, you could say, we want to, we're interested in selling outright the 20-acre undeveloped site, but we'd like to retain ownership of the improved portions so we can make sure we can maintain the existing agreements that we have on there. So, there's a variety of options that the city has on that.
Mayor, if I could continue, because the whole proposition becomes much more complicated when you start talking about developing the obligated part of the parcel. You know, the price tag starts increasing substantially because we're obligated for 4,001 parking places there. So, I personally, and I think that, I mean, originally, I'm, I think there's a few of us that were here when we, when we made that transaction in order to settle the parking agreement, and for the time being, that black lot is serving the purpose of, and it actually served as a way to get Crystal Lagoon on board, because we had parking, established parking already to offer them. So, I mean, with the blessing of the Cardinals and Azta that we were able to, you know, that's something that they didn't actually have to do in order to move forward. And as Crystal Lagoon moves forward with development, we, I mean, I feel like we should stand back on the black lot and see what happens. It's, I believe, it's going to become more valuable, and the more valuable it comes, the better the proposition of the taxpayers making any kind of investment there to move development forward. That's my opinion. That's how I feel about the obligated part of that parcel. The 19.7 acres, you know, I'm open to, I'm not open to the city being the bank there. That's my personal opinion. We've highly incent, we actually, you know, we bought Ballpark Boulevard to incentivize Class A office space, and I think the price tag, if somebody in the room might know, I think we're up to around $16 million spent there to activate that site. I believe Crystal Lagoon intends to have Class A office space, and I know we've incentivized Westgate to attract Class A office space. And Class A office space within the footprint of Westgate is probably better for the taxpayers than anyplace else, because it's walkable to go have lunch. This is, you know, further, you're going to have to get in your car to go have lunch at Westgate from 91st and Cardinals Way. It's too, it takes too long to walk over there and walk back, and once somebody gets in their car, they're likely to go maybe to Park West, or, you know, there's other options once you're in your car. So, I'm not sold on the idea of Class A office space, but I am, I do think we should seriously consider developing the unencumbered part of it, at least for now, and then, kind of standing back and waiting to see what transpires with Crystal Lagoon, whether they need a bigger footprint, whether some other entertainment-type concept wants to be part of what's happening there. I just think it's too early to be making a decision that's going to require a pretty substantial investment from the taxpayers to move forward, replacing the parking. But I am open to the concept of, you know, putting it out there and seeing what type of development that wouldn't require an incentive from the taxpayers to develop that 19.7 acres, as far as the city retaining ownership and a ground lease there. That's it for me now, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very interested in developing this area, and I'm, I feel very comfortable that this property is a, not a starting point, but a relay point to continue the progressiveness of that area with Crystal Lagoon, with the Cardinals there, the partnership we have, the Coyote Stadium, or I should say, the Gila River Arena Stadium, the entertainment district. I think it's, I think it's a pivotal time that we look into this. I do have a question. My question is, as you said, over time, we should, we would realize and ROI define that. When, when would we know, if we were to bring on Plaza companies, when would we know how long it would take us for that ROI to arrive?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Aldama, I think that's what we would, part of what we do is work closely with the developer to look at that, look at all the different options. A lot of the uniqueness of the site is, how could we do, accommodate vertical development and not run afoul of our, you know, existing agreements? That's a big, that could be a big number, and if you, if you have to keep all 4,000 parking spaces and you only have to build vertical construction or other types of things, it may not achieve the ROI that the council would be interested in. So, what we would do is start laying out really a game plan over the next, you know, period of time, and try to lay out kind of what we think would be some logical processes for how we look at that site, making sure there's appropriate check-ins with the council so that you can, you can make your investments kind of targeted, and you can start off really, you know, on the really strategic side, and then, link an ROI to projects that are coming in. And so, some of the things in terms of, we've looked at, for example, building out over the retention area. There's a large retention area on the south side of the lot, and we've done an estimation that that could accommodate, if you were just to put underground storage there, fill that in and then pave it, you would create roughly about 700 parking spaces. So, based on about 120 parking spaces per acre, what you're probably freeing up is about five and a half acres of land potentially by filling that in. So, that, if that, assuming that we could design that area and there's a right number there, it might be a way to free up five and a half acres of vertical construction that leads us that ROI. But we need to study that in further. We haven't, you know, we haven't gone through engineering, because we, you know, we want to make sure the council is on board with expending time, energy on this site, but that would be some of the early things we would do, is we would start really getting the technical people looking at the site and making recommendations, giving us a better cost understanding, and I think we can do that in a way that has very minimal risk on the front end to the council.
Mayor, if I may, thank you, Kevin. I appreciate it. Yeah, I think, I'm really supportive of moving forward with finding a strategic plan for the area. I'd rather do it now and not later, so I think in this volatile market, I think it's the right thing to do. If we look at commercial office, that might be a reason to bring more developers in within, in that area and some of the, some of the vacant spaces we have available. So, for now, I'm supportive of going forward with an agreement that will bring us all the information that we don't have today. Thank you, Mayor.
Art?
Thank you, Mayor. Forgive me, I'm going to be saying a lot, probably, but there's a lot to say about this project. I think anyone can find reasons not to move forward, but I think that the reasons to move forward outweigh any concern at this point. Right now, the momentum and synergy within the Westgate-Zanhero area is incredible. In fact, in all of Glendale, it's incredible. Planning to build upon that momentum and synergy, I think, is critical to the city and its future development. We talk about relationships, which is one of the things that the city manager mentioned. Each year, each of us meets hundreds of new people, and there are always a few that we seem to gravitate to, that we feel that we can trust, that we feel that we can talk to about current situations, and we value their input. In the short time that I've gotten to know Sharon Harper, I believe she is one of those individuals. She's been in the business for nearly 30 years. You don't stay in the business and succeed in the business unless you know what you're doing. And she has proven time and again, especially with the project, Skysong, that she does know what she's doing, and she has done it to the advantage of both the city of Scottsdale and to her company. I think this is but the first step in a very long process. It's not going to happen overnight. We're already hearing about questions about what should we allow on this land? What's the ROI? There are no answers at this point until some kind of outline and blueprint and development plan is created. And what we are looking at today is, do we have the confidence in the performance of Plaza Companies to consider going into a partnership with them on the development of this land? What picture the development takes is yet to be determined, and will be determined by the expertise of not only the city's economic development department, but market conditions and what Plaza Companies brings to the table, none of which we know at this point. And I think one of the things where perhaps, as we talk about what is appropriate for this site, and I'm talking the entire site, not just one parcel, I'm talking the entire black light, black lot site, is I think there is an opportunity for council to weigh in on what kinds of development they believe adds value to not just the Westgate area, but to the city of Glendale. I believe that this is an opportunity to create revenue for the city in the long term. I also believe there may be opportunities down the road to tap into some federal government infrastructure money, because that will be the biggest nut, I believe, for this city to crack, is to come up with the funding to invest in infrastructure in the area. And when I mean infrastructure, what are we talking about? Roads, sewer, water, the basics that you need to create a development. And I believe, over the next four years, there may be an opportunity to benefit from some federal funding for such a project. I have to say this, in the four, five years now that I've been on council, four and a half, five years I've been in council, Kevin Phelps has moved this city forward tremendously and brought new revenue to the city in numbers that I never would have expected. He has a true love for this city. He wants development that is good for the city. I believe strongly in his recommendation to move forward, and in having met Sharon Harper, I think she's an excellent partner with which this city should move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Mr. Phelps, you used the word redevelopment a couple of times in your presentation today, and the council also went out and visited the Skysong that you've mentioned, and you gave kind of a history of that and left, its original genesis, as I recall, was Los Arcos Mall, which had clearly grown very long in the tooth over the years, not unlike our local Valley West Mall did. And then, Los Arcos is also, that Skysong site is also in the heart of what used to be Scottsdale's automobile sales row, and they had experienced somewhat what we had as well with the dealerships moving out to the outskirts and freeway frontage and things like that. So, you mentioned redevelopment, and I'm curious as to, in what way do you see this being a redevelopment project when it's really yet to have been developed?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Turner, I guess, in my mind, the, there's a portion of this site has been developed by the city. They've developed it into parking. I'm using the term redevelopment, because if we want to do something different than what the intended use was, that would be how I would define redevelopment. So, maybe just a matter of terminology, but that's how I was intending that.
Thank you. Because unlike the model that was given us to, as a sample, this, well, the Skysong, Los Arcos location was, was very much an area that needed redevelopment, that was a drain on that part of the Scottsdale community financially and socially, other social issues and that sort of thing, whereas... Whereas this is, this land we own out in the Westgate's right in the heart of the hottest real estate market probably in the state, at the hottest, at the hottest real estate market the state's seen in many years. The, so anxious we not look at it so much as redevelopment. Yeah, we have some paved land out there, but it's not as if there's anything overwhelming that needs to be done to turn that around, in my opinion. You also mentioned the opportunity for taxpayers to retain ownership and, and be partners in, I guess, the, the potential future development. Can you talk more about how you would see that happening and how do we guarantee that the taxpayers' dollars get treated just as valuable as any other dollars that go into the project from private investors? And I'll preface, I'll finish with that question with, because in my experience, the taxpayers always seem to get the short end of the stick. And if it's a true redevelopment project, then that may be understood. But in an opportunity like this, how do we guarantee that the taxpayers' dollars get every bit as much of a return on investment that an investor's dollar would?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Turner, I, I think at first it starts with, one, having a team in place that can identify the right type of projects and development that does ensure that. And that's one of the reasons why we're making, we're making the recommendation with Plaza Properties. At the end of the day, the assurance comes in terms of what's being proposed and how that agreement is, is put together. I think all of us in this room know that there's been a number of things the city has done in past years that while I under, that we, while we all understood the intent, the execution of the agreement wasn't necessarily as complete as it could have been. And so we've had to kind of work our way through some of those prior agreements that maybe could have been done and executed more importantly. So I, it's a hypothetical at this point, but what I would say is, you know, this council has, has done an excellent job of looking at different projects and, and items that we've brought forth from the econ development team. We would walk you through every one scenario individually and, and show how we can make sure that there's a benefit back to the, the taxpayers. But it's hard to talk about something that's not being proposed yet. Again, I don't know whether, I know that, I'm sure the city of Scottsdale, you know, I'm sure had, you know, similar kinds of concerns. And I know, I don't know whether Sharon, whether that would be something you would want to talk about how you made, you know, what, what would the safeguards put in place with, Mr. Mayor, if you're, if you're comfortable, and the safeguards to make sure that the city was protected along the development path?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager, I'm Sharon Harper, CEO of Plaza Companies. And thank you, of course, for this conversation and the discussions we're having for an opportunity to do what I think could be very visionary on this site for the city of Glendale. I think several of the members of council have said, we still need more information to really understand how this could work. And I think that's what we're talking about now, entering in to this agreement, to really put that forth. The city of, of Scottsdale certainly had those concerns as well, but with our agreement with the city, there are timeframes, there are returns on their land investment, all kinds of items that are put in place that protect the city. There are the landowners there, as you are here, as well as the developer and as well as groups that are investing to do vertical development as well. So a lot of work ahead of us, but we're excited about that opportunity. I think it's a chance to put these different parcels together where that, where collectively you create this signature sense of place, collaboration between different product types and connectivity, all to really support a more elevated development in the community.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't know that, that answered the question, Councilmember Turner, but again, I would say, is it obviously what we'd want to do? If we do any kind of investment and development there, we want to make sure that the citizens are protected, that we, that we minimize risk back to the tax, taxpayers and, but that's still to be determined as we move forward.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Phelps, so I guess what I would, would be hoping to hear is that we would, that the plan from the start would be to set up the kind of a, an operation where the value of whatever land the taxpayers were putting into the pot was credited just to the dollar amount, just like anything else was. See, the, the benefit to Scottsdale for the redevelopment of Los Arcos into Sky Song, in my understanding and having done some research on it, isn't so much that they're making, getting revenues back from Sky Song itself. The benefit is they stopped the slide in a neighborhood that had once been productive for them. And then they also reversed the tide with development now that's coming in around Sky Song. They planted a seed and it's, and it's, it's the other stuff that's coming in around at the, the commerce, the apartments and things like that. And that's why so often it does make sense to have public dollars go in. But we don't have that situation here. The, the surrounding development, the adjacent development is occurring and is going to continue to occur by all signs that we've seen. And in fact, our taxpayers have already heavily incentivized all of that. They're already fully invested in it and, but they're not making any return for the money they've put into it, other than the tax rate return, which taxpayers are entitled to anyway, just as if, just like a, a property owner is entitled to a lease return. This is what taxpayers get for the investment they've put in, in the, in infrastructure and everything else. They get the sales tax return. But we're not getting a, the taxpayers aren't getting a piece of the action, so to say, or piece of the return for the, the value of the growth of Westgate, you know, as a partner with, in it. And I, if, and that's one of the problems with the public partner, public-private partnerships is that too often the public portion doesn't get the rewards that the private portion does. And if we stop and think about it, the taxpayers have invested heavily in Westgate itself and getting it up and moving. And, and I know we have council members and all of us have seen that and we were around while it was happening. And so we, taxpayers have a lot of investment already in there. And we've also have an agreement with Westgate that if they're able to attract Class A office space, that they'll be treated very favorably regarding inspections and fees and all of those other things. So again, future investment from the taxpayers to make something, make a desired thing happen there. Then the taxpayers invested extremely heavily, even more heavily, in the Camelback Ranch area as an incentive to get commercial development down there, of which we've yet to see anything. Now, there is some residential development, I think, underway, some apartment, maybe under construction down there, but we've yet to, you know, in over 15 years, the taxpayers haven't seen a return on that. And they're still paying, you know, 12, 13, 14 million dollars a year without any, you know, with $100,000 or less in, in tax revenue coming back and no return on the money they've put in. Taxpayers don't own a piece of the Dodgers or the White Sox. You know, that would be a return on investment. And then we've just recently invested another 15, 16 million on Ballpark Boulevard with the intention to activate what I think we called Vision Four, if that's still the name of it, and to connect it to, to Camelback Ranch and to connect all of that to Westgate. So there's another 15 million or more that the taxpayers are investing out there and not getting return on yet, won't get a pro-rata share of return. And now we're being, we're considering activating another parcel out there that will only serve to compete with the taxpayers' investment already. The best interest, I think, for the taxpayers is to see Westgate, the footprint that exists there and all the development potential it has. The best for our taxpayers is to see that progress, not to siphon off development from it, but to help focus development to that and to the land around Camelback Ranch and to the land at Vision Four. Let's get those going. You know, let's finish Westgate, let's get Camelback Ranch and Vision Four vertical before we activate this parcel. And we are getting a return on this parcel. Yes, we're spending money on parking, on the parking lot and the lighting and that sort of thing, but that's not a zero return. That return was established when the previous council promised parking to Asta and the Cardinals. The return for that was that the business that Asta and the Cardinals and the, and the social benefit of having them in the city of Glendale. The black lot asphalt is replacement parking. So we got Tanger and replaced it after a while with the black lot. So the benefit's already in there. The bene, it's still the benefit we get that the previous council determined we would be getting by having the Cardinals in the stadium here in the first place. So regardless of where that lot would be located, it would still need to be maintained. And the benefit for maintaining it was having the stadium in Glendale. So I think it's important we, we tie the expense of that back. So in short, you know, with, certainly with complete respect to Plaza Companies and Ms. Harper, it's, that's certainly not the issue here. I think more than qualified to do this kind of a project. I just think that, A, now is the wrong time and that our taxpayers will be better off if we wait to activate this parcel until more developments occurred out there. And the other is, I think we always end up with schemes in which, and I don't mean that in a pejorative, but a scheme in a legal sense in which the taxpayers get the short end of the stick. They would be investing, you know, another 10 or 12 million dollars and probably the value of that 20 acres, plus whatever the development value of the larger parking lot. And I just haven't heard yet that the commitment is they're going to be treated like full partners. They're going to be treated like a redevelopment partner that's, you know, that's paying an ante to get into the game, but not really standing a chance at winning the pot. Thank you. Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, so let's, let's maybe talk for a second, if we can, about that term, return on investment. In the private sector, the return on investment discussion is, is, is really pretty simple and, and pretty clear. In government, it's really a whole different story. So let's, let me give you two examples. One could argue, based on the comments, that we could have kept the Beardsley Road parking lot as a park and ride lot and the taxpayers would have received benefit. We owned that lot. This council made a decision to make an investment in water resources and addition, some other things. And by making that investment, which at the end of the day, we sold the property for exactly what we purchased it for. Somebody could argue we could have sold it for more. We also invested money on the water side. But that one dealership now returns back to our citizens in excess of a million dollars a year. And then since that time, we've now opened up three additional dealerships. So we could have easily not invested the money from an ROI perspective and, and nobody would argue with doing it. What I think, if you do it correctly, however, we see a, a large benefit. Not only does it generate that much in terms of sales tax, but they, the city made a substantial amount of money on construction sales tax, on development impact fees, and they continue to get, we see an increased amount for real estate taxes. And that's where the ROI discussion is different. Because if we were to develop something at the, at, at Westgate, not only do we look at the land lease that we could get, but we also will benefit from one-time construction sales tax. We would benefit from increased DIF fees that would go to support our parks and our roads and other systems. We would also see a benefit on realis, an increased amount of property taxes being paid. And we would also be getting it every year on the lease space. We would get lease excise. So just on the direct benefits, we would be able to show, if we do this right, we can show a benefit, I think, very clearly back to our citizens because all those monies, for the most part, except for DIF, which has more specific uses, the rest of that revenue goes into our general fund that support our police departments and support all of our libraries and our park operations. So another example would be the former Water Services site that now has a Topgolf and has, will soon open up, I believe, this week, the Holiday Inn. Again, we made the decision to, to work with the developer. We, we didn't market the project. It maybe, again, potentially could have gotten more money. But remember, if you recall, just the Topgolf alone is estimated to generate $600,000 a year in taxes. That did not include the construction sales tax, did not include DIF fees and does not include the, it does include the increased revenue for real estate taxes. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think this whole notion is about, if we do this correctly, we should do it to the benefit of our taxpayers. And I would, you know, using those two examples, I, I think this council has made outstanding decisions and, and can show that sometimes investing money or foregoing of fees still is in the benefit long-term for the citizens that are here. And, and so that's, then there's another part that makes this really interesting is those are just direct economic impacts. Then on top of that, you have the indirect that we can start measuring. Little bit more difficult to do it, but if you were to, to position 3,000 jobs in, in that area, that month, there, there are multipliers that could, and, and studies that show they will spend money in the, out, you know, in the area, of which we're in a good position to capture a lot of that additional revenue. That is, so all those things add up to, when we're looking at ROI, we would clearly want to have a discussion with the council on each step of the way to make sure that you can communicate back to your citizens that by investing money correctly, that we think it's in their long-term best interest because those dollars can help us pay for the, all of the different types of services we provide out of general fund that really don't have a direct revenue source.
Thank you, Mayor. I think for me, this boils down to what do we really know and what do we need to know before we develop this property? And I, I believe that this professional service agreement will provide that information. I see this as an opportunity for plaza companies to come forth with their ideas, with their proposals, with, this is what we think this is capable of, of achieving. I don't think we're making a decision to invest money today. We're making a decision to see what's available, see what we could do and decide as a council because I, if I'm not mistaken, it's all still going to be within our control. We will decide whether or not we are going to invest taxpayer money into these projects at a future date. But first, we need to know what's possible. What, what is, what does the market say will happen? And I think we need to be very critical when we look at that information to make sure that, that it's accurate. And, and I, that's, that's really the only concern I have about moving forward is that the disease do come back to us, that we look at it critically, that we say, is this a good investment for the city of Glendale and for its residents? What are the possibilities of this going bad? And how do we avoid that happening? There's been projects in the past that due to economic situations that they didn't turn out as was planned. We need to think ahead as we, as these things come back to us and we say, you know, we believe that we need these safeguards in place, whatever those are, to ensure that that doesn't happen on this project. But otherwise, I'm very much in favor of moving forward with a professional services agreement with plaza companies in order to get this information before us. And several council members have already stated that. That's really what this is trying to accomplish. We, we don't know. We can't vote on something we don't know. And so to say no today, I think, is premature until we do know. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I just turned it off instead of turning it on. So I, I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I would like to know is a couple of things. One is, would plaza companies be offering us an all or nothing concept on the parcel? Or would they be open to offering us multiple options on how we move forward on the parcel? So I don't know, that's kind of why I was, was where I, because I, I think that there's options to do different things, whether we decide we're going to develop the unencumbered parcel now and stand back on the, so I, I'd like to know, like, what the concept is, is if they're going to be, basically be looking at as, as a, you know, all or nothing concept?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachoff, nothing has been determined. As I said earlier, there's a whole variety of just options that we think exist right now, just on ownership. now, just on ownership, selling, hybrid. Nothing has been decided. What we want to do is bring on board, uh, Plaza Companies, start analyzing what the options are and then come back to the council with, uh, with recommendations as to kind of, and then you can ask those kinds of questions and see forward. Nothing, there is no all or nothing because we don't know what, what this development's going to look like. Now, we've looked at in general what could potentially the site accommodate for vertical construction. Uh, we had to, we have to get a sense of what the existing entitlements mean in terms of our ability to attract, um, commercial development on the site. So we've, we're, we're just in the conceptual stage. Once we enter into an agreement, we'll go from the conceptual stage to really start bringing experts on board to look at it in more detail so that when we come forward to the council with some recommendations, we will have that level of detail to back up kind of our recommendation.
Okay. So would that be, I mean, would that, so I guess what I want to, want to know is, is everything on the table? I know every conversation I've heard, and this is, these discussions have been happening for over two years now, at least two years that I'm aware of. So, um, and every one of those conversations has basically been kind of formed around the idea of Class A office space. So I just, I guess what I need to know from my own comfort level is, is that is, is everything on the table is, or is it an all or nothing concept? You're saying that no, it's not an all or nothing concept, that there would be concepts of developing maybe the 19.7 acres and not developing the actual obligated part of the parcel now, maybe looking at doing that in the future. I think that's an important, at least a consideration that, that's part of, of the concept. And then that, that, you know, all types of development are on the table, not necessarily centered around Class A office space, but it could be entertainment, it could be, you know, a variety of other types of concepts. So I just would like to know that, that there's a variety of options going to be on the table.
Mayor, members of the council, um, as I stated earlier in the presentation, what makes this site one of the challenges is, is we believe that whatever we do on this site should reach the broader goals of the council. And so this council, for example, has, has said, we'd like to continue to develop the sports and entertainment district and we want to try to find developments that are complementary and add value to the continued growth of the district. So what I would, the only qualifier I would put in there, there are all kinds of development you might, could attract there, but they may not all meet the council's vision of, of looking for the right type of development that adds value to all the other investments that are in the area. I think that's the, that's going to be the opportunity, but it's also the challenge. And I, I referenced the gas station. I, I, I'm going to guess that we could probably get somebody to come in in pretty short order and put a gas station on, on Cardinals Way. That wouldn't be, I can guarantee you, wouldn't be our recommendation because we don't think that would add value to the entertainment district. So what this is really about is bringing on board, uh, an, an expert that can help us walk through those opportunities. And we would fully expect this council to ask the question if we, if we start looking at ways of, of starting to invest money in this site, is to demonstrate how does this meet our vision and goal for this district? And obviously if we can't do that, that becomes a pretty short conversation. So nothing is, nothing has been locked in. Yes, we are, we are very, very intent on trying to attract Class A office space to Glendale. We believe it's the one area that we, in terms of jobs, that we're struggling to provide to our citizens that we think, uh, does make sense over long-term. And so we believe we may have to, uh, on some earlier projects, be a little bit more aggressive, just like we were more aggressive on having to attract the BMW dealership. We didn't have to do anything to attract the Volvo Jaguar and Land Rover dealerships because once we got, you know, once they were, once the BMW is there, it really provided some momentum. So we're going to look very carefully to see what we can do to attract office space. But again, it still has to fit into a longer range plan. It still has to fit into the vision of the, of the council and it needs to have an ROI, uh, depending on how we would determine what the parameters of the ROI are.
Mayor, if I could continue. So I guess what I'd like to know is are we going to be presented of, of concepts that maybe don't include Class A office space? Or does that, because, you know, I mean, basically we've been presented with a concept that included Class A office space previously when we went to, at Class A office space and multifamily. We've seen, we've seen that concept. So I just, I mean, if every, I just want to know, are you going to, not, maybe not gas stations, but anything that would be considered fit into the sports and entertainment district, the growth of the district, but other concepts that maybe might be other forms of entertainment, types of things that would fit in there. Are you going to dump the bag out and let the council say, here are all the concepts that would work on this site, including Class A office space, but all these other uses as well?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Tomachoff, again, you know, we, we don't want to go in, uh, narrow in terms of what the opportunity is here. We want to start out really broad, understand the market and start narrowing down what the options are. And clearly our job will be to bring from our econ development team and with our, with our consultant is to bring forth, um, projects that we think can happen and that do meet the bigger vision for the council. I don't know what that looks like today, um, but we're certainly, uh, you know, we're not precluding, um, uh, Class A office space, but we're not going to necessarily mandate Class A office space. We're, we're wide open to the opportunities.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Just one more comment if I might. Uh, and you know, I've, I've been very open with you, expressing my concern about the Class A office space because I, um, while I understand, um, you know, that wanting to attract the jobs here in Glendale, we've invested in other areas to do that, but we're coming out of a pandemic. There's the, the workforce and how people work is, is pivoting now and I, and I don't think anybody really has a clear idea until we see what lease renewal rates are and all kinds of things that are still, we don't know. What is the real need going forward going to be? How much Class A office space do we need in the valley? I don't think anybody alive knows the answer to that question right now. So I just, I want, I just personally, I would be comfortable with a very, you know, of, uh, put, you know, put all the, put everything on the table and let's figure out what would probably be the best scenario and the best return on investment because I still think the future of Class A office space and how much do we need in the valley? The sublease market is very hot right now, um, because people don't need all the space that they're committed for. So I just think we need to have all our options on the table and it wouldn't be just focused on that we want Class A office space here and then we're going to figure out what else fits around it. Thank you, Mayor.
You.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited with what, just the opportunity to come back with the plan. Our, our team has hit homerun after homeruns. We had one, I guess foul ball, uh, a famous company Ikea was going to come to Glendale. The city was excited. They picked us. The other cities in the valley, you know, they were losers. And then Ikea decided not to do brick and mortar anymore. I remember I called, uh, Kevin Phelps up and said, I'm glad they left because you will find something better. And now we have Crystal Lagoons project where Ikea was going to go. And everything it took to bring that together is really mind-boggling. Parking issues were addressed, other issues were addressed, and our staff pulled it off. So I'm looking forward to see what they can come up with the staff recommendation and work through this. And whatever they come up with, I'm sure will be a winner because we haven't had a loser yet. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, and I'll, I'll make a statement and then I'm going to limit discussion on this. We've been an hour and 20 minutes into this and we've got a really full calendar today. Uh, so what it comes down to is, is the first question is should the city explore potential opportunities to develop the black lock? I'm looking for consensus on that. Okay. So we got past that one. Uh, and then I want to speak, uh, to some things that were said that, uh, I was a little offended by. We have projects, there's no doubt about it, that we've spent money, taxpayers' money. But it's, it's much like the difference between when I cook dinner and my wife cooks dinner. Uh, and I know that you're going to go, how was that a comparison? When my wife cooks, she cooks one thing and she gets it done and then she cooks the next thing and she gets that done and she cooks the next thing. And she'll, she'll listen to this and she'll be mad at me, but, but it's true. And she cooks everything good, but by the time she gets the last thing finished, the first three things are cold. And I think that's the difference between what makes a good chef, a good cook, a, a person at home, uh, to be able to put all these different things all simultaneously together to where it all comes together at once and you get to enjoy your dinner all at the same time. We've got a lot of projects we've invested money in. It takes time to, to cook. And, and if we stopped and did one project and waited for that to come to fruition and then started the next one, folks, we wouldn't be here, our predecessors would be here a thousand years from now, talking about this issue today. And who knows how it's going to be a thousand years from now? I think it's a good plan and it's a simple plan. They're making a recommendation that we partner on a working relationship with Plaza. That's all they're asking for right now. And in the future, come back to us with the plan. We still get to decide what happens in that plan. They're not asking to approve a plan. They're just saying, let us bring some ideas to you. And I don't know why we, why we would argue that for an hour and 20 minutes. I, I can't figure that out. This is pretty simple. I wish they were all this easy. So, uh, I'm going to ask, do we have a consensus, uh, for the recommendation, which is to, uh, have a consideration for, for professional service agreement established in a working relationship with Plaza Companies?
Yes.
Okay. There you go. Moving on. You got it. I got to go to the bathroom. Go ahead.
Item two, pension funding policy.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide the presentation will be Lisette Camacho, our Director of Budget and Finance, and she'll be assisted with Levi Gibson, our Assistant Director, and also guest presenter Kurt Freud.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. In this presentation, we'll cover the proposed changes to the pension funding policy for fiscal year 2022. At the end of the presentation, we'll open it up for council questions. And with that, I'll turn over the presentation to Mr. Gibson.
Thank you. Like to give a little bit of background, uh, with regard to this policy. Arizona House Bill 2019 passed into law on April 3rd, 2018. It codified into Arizona Revised Statutes, Section 38-863.01, and it required municipalities to adopt a pension funding policy for PSPRS. The policy must be adopted on or before July 1st, 2019, and annually each year thereafter. And this policy must be posted on the city's public website. The pension funding policy must also include funding objectives that address how stability will be maintained for the required employer contributions, how and when funding requirements will be met, and it should define the funded ratio target and a timeline for reaching the target. Currently, the funding ratio goal is to be fully funded at 100% by June 30th, 2037. And this is based on the June 30th, 2020 actuarial valuation. Council plans on using the 20-year amortization period. This allows us to maintain our required contribution payment from operating funds. Additionally, the policy, uh, and the statute requires that you formally accept the assets, liabilities, and current funding ratio. Currently, the assets of the PSPRS plans for fire and police are $326 million. The unfunded accrued liability is $290 million, which gives us a funded ratio of 53%. And I'll turn over the remaining presentation to Ms. Camacho.
The proposed funding policy also includes, um, two actions that City Council has authorized. The first one is to issue certificates of participation in fiscal year 2022 to make a one-time payment to PSPRS to pay down the unfunded liability and, and achieve an estimated 90% funded level for both police and fire. The certificates of participation that will be pricing tomorrow and the par amount that the city will be issuing is about 253 million, and we expect to close the transaction in mid-July. The council will also establish a pension stabilization reserve fund, using about 20 million from the savings over two to three fiscal, fiscal year savings from the certificates of participation. The funds can only be used for addressing future pension unfunded liability needs of the city. And as far as the savings, the total savings are estimated to be 35 million for the first three years, so that's for fiscal year 22, 23, and 24. These two actions do not preclude the City Council from making any additional contributions to PSPRS. The resolution to adopt the funding policy is on the voting meeting agenda tonight. And with that, we'll open it up for council feedback and questions.
Questions?
And I don't know whether this would need to be an item for future, um, because of the savings, the general fund's going to have on the contribution annually, um, I, I, maybe I need to do it as an item of special interest, but I think there's an opportunity here to set some money aside for presumptive cancer. So I don't know whether, I don't know how I would need to do that. I can do it as a council item of special interest, but I think we should have a conversation at some point. This is fantastic. It's great that we're doing it, but it also gives us an opportunity to prepare for, um, while we have the savings, to set some money aside for, that we end up, you know, building that equity for, for future presumptive cancer claims. Who would, how would I, I'm, so I guess I'm asking, do I need to do that as a council item of special interest or, okay?
Mayor, members of the council, um, just as kind of a point of order, I guess, that, that would be something that we would talk to council with every year during the budget process as well when we, especially when we start into the year and do the forecast and then at the end of the year when we're doing kind of our financial upward update where we ended the year and that type of thing, be a good time to talk about those things as well if we do have a surplus, what, what, how council would like to address that.
Mayor, if I could, so our contribution this year was 30 million, is that right?
Mayor, members of the council, the contribution this year was about 32 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And you don't need anything right now, correct?
Mayor, members of the council, no.
Perfect. Okay. So you have no other questions? Thank you. Item number three.
Item three, general obligation bond committee.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report again will be Lisette Camacho, Director of Budget and Finance.
Mayor, members of the council, for this presentation, we'll be covering general obligation bonds. In our last presentation on, um, the bond committee and bond elections back in April, City Council requested additional information on successful bond elections of other cities. So we'll be presenting on that today. We're also looking for consensus from City Council on the formation of a bond committee for the 2022 bond election. And, um, we'll cover the potential bond election timeline for the election in 2022. You've seen this slide before, um, but for the benefit of the public, we have an overview on general obligation bonds or GEO bonds. GEO bonds are paid for using secondary property tax. The City Council's policy is to assume a flat levy and that means the revenues collected from the property tax is about the same every year and it only grows by the, um, the new construction or the new properties added to the tax roll. GEO bonds must be authorized by voters and the amount of debt the city can issue is subject to constitutional limits. And the limits are based on net assessed full cash value. The outstanding debt or the amount of debt that the city can issue is limited to 20% for combined water, sewer, public safety, streets, transportation, open space, and parks, and 6% for general municipal purpose like libraries and general government facilities. In 2021, the legislation that the city moved forward passed for allowing for the repurposing of bond authority, which means that the purpose of, or the use of the bond can be, um, can be changed by the voters through an election to a new purpose from the prior bond election. This slide is the, um, the additional authorization that is needed. The various authorizations that you're seeing that are highlighted are the ones that require additional voter authorization potentially for the 2022 election. So the landfill requires about 7 million and they need the additional authorization in fiscal year 2026. Libraries, about 6.9 million and the authorization is needed beginning fiscal year 26. Streets and parking, 113 million and the additional authorization is needed in fiscal year 23. Parks and recreation, about 88 million and additional voter authorization is needed in fiscal year 23. And flood control, almost 7 million and additional voter authorization is needed in fiscal year 25. The next several slides will cover information on the successful bond election for other cities. There were two cities that had bond questions for the 2020 election. The first one is the city of Tempe. They had five bond questions totaling 349 million. They had five bond questions totaling $349 million. All five questions passed. The questions were for water and sewer improvements, for $134 million; street improvements and storm drains, for $74 million; public safety, for $34 million; parks improvements and community services, for $45 million; and municipal infrastructure preservation, for $62 million. The city of Tempe did not have a bond committee. They did do several public outreach. They had a bond election virtual community forum, and it was a YouTube forum, so they had 224 views. They also had an article on Tempe Today, and the Tempe Today is their monthly newsletter. And the Tempe Chamber of Commerce had a voter's guide for all bond questions and propositions for the 2020 election. The city of Tempe's bond questions also received endorsement from the Tempe Chamber of Commerce. They had election signs up throughout the city. And their publicity pamphlet included a tax impact of $170.88 per year for residents valued at $250,000. There were four arguments for the bonds. The mayor and council wrote the arguments for the bonds, the chair of the Tempe Neighborhood Advisory Commission, the Tempe firefighters, and the mayor also had his own letter. There were no arguments against the bonds. The city of Mesa also had a successful 2020 bond election. They only had one bond question totaling $100 million for street and highway. This question also passed. There was no bond committee. They had some public outreach consisting of four public meetings, five focus groups, and eight individual stakeholder interviews. They also had election signs throughout the city. The city of Mesa's publicity pamphlet included a tax impact of $45 per year for a residence valued at $250,000. There were five arguments for the bonds. And the Chamber of Commerce, Visit Mesa, United Mesa Firefighters, the mayor, and Connecting Mesa's Neighborhoods all wrote the arguments for the bonds. There were no arguments against the bonds. We also have here the city of Scottsdale, which had a 2019 bond election. They had three questions totaling $319 million. All three questions passed. The first one was on parks, recreation, and senior services, for about $113 million; community spaces and infrastructure, for about $112 million; and public safety and technology, for about $94 million. The city of Scottsdale did not have a bond committee, but they did have a council subcommittee on capital improvement plan. There were three members appointed by the mayor. The subcommittee was tasked to review the CIP and develop a list of 67 projects that were necessary but lacked funding. They narrowed the scope through public outreach. They had a public outreach for one month, from February through March. They had six public meetings. They had 211 total attendees for the public meetings. Online engagement, they had almost 11,000 page views. And they also have the Best of Scottsdale Political Action Committee. The Political Action Committee hired a public relations company to do, to run the campaign. They also paid for printing, signs, canvassing, polling, and placing ads on local television. The city of Scottsdale's publicity pamphlet included a tax impact of almost $72 per year for a residence valued at $250,000. The city of Scottsdale had a total of 59 combined arguments for the bonds. They were written by various organizations, the mayor and council, former mayors and council members, the Best of Scottsdale Political Action Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, and CEOs and presidents of businesses like the Scottsdale Fashion Square Mall, the Ice Den. There were two arguments against the bonds, and their arguments were only for the parks, recreation, and senior services. One thing unique about the city of Scottsdale is in 2015, they did create a citizens' bond oversight committee. That committee is responsible for monitoring the city's progress and implementing the capital projects outlined in the bond program. They also receive reports on the city's progress on the bond program, and they reviewed any proposed project changes to the program. They also provide feedback and updates to City Council. The composition of the bond oversight committee, there are seven members appointed by City Council. We also thought we'd provide the information we provided back in April to City Council as a reminder that the city of Glendale had a successful bond election in 2007. Five propositions totaling $270 million. Four of the five passed. Economic Development Bond Question failed. At that time, the City Council established a 70-member bond committee. There were five subcommittees, and each subcommittee's had 12 committee meetings. And the committee and subcommittees made recommendations to add or remove projects and increase the amount requested for the bond. The publicity pamphlet for the city of Glendale had no arguments for or against the bonds. And with that, I'll turn over the presentation to Mr. Gibson.
Thank you. So we're here today to gain consensus on how we would like to organize, or how the council would like to organize for a potential 2022 bond election. There are many options, as we've seen with the other cities that ran successful bond elections. Some cities chose to not form a bond committee. Some cities chose to use a subgroup of the City Council as their bond committee. Or, as we did in the prior election, form a bond committee. This could include citizens, council members. The size of the committee could vary. We could also incorporate citizen participation through public meetings, focus groups, surveys, or citizen bond oversight committee, similar to how Scottsdale did it. So we're looking to gain consensus from the council today on how you would like to organize for the potential 2022 bond election.
I'd like to ask you a real quick question. Of the cities that all had bond issues, how many cities had actual large participation from their citizens in, in, in other words, a committee? And then those that had those, how many passed and how many failed?
So of Tempe, Scottsdale, and Mesa, none of them had citizen bond committees. One of those three had a subcommittee made up of council members. We were the only ones that had a large citizen committee. The three prior, so Mesa, Tempe, and Scottsdale passed. Ours failed in that last election.
Okay, and I know that we were talking, each one of us identifying like 10 people. To me, that just seems so large. And that's my personal view. I do understand that people, the concept of everybody participating is wonderful. Getting people to show up is totally different sometimes. I just, you know, I guess my first question at the council is, does it actually need to be 10 people for each one of us? Or could we do just as well if we had five for each one of us? Would be one of my questions. I think 70 people is just too much. I think you're going to have a large amount of people that's not going to show up. I do think that it needs to be mixed with business owners in the city. Needs to be residents in the city. People that have a stake in the city. But non-residents, non-business owners, I would like to not allow that to happen personally, for whatever that's worth.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you guys look at any West Valley cities?
Mayor, members of the council. For the 2020 bond election, only Mesa and Tempe had questions. The rest for other cities, they were more of the school districts.
Right, but Mayor, if I could. We're going back to a frame of reference for ourselves for 2007. So I'm just, I don't know whether the dynamics are different in the East Valley and the West Valley. Like, are the West Valley cities, do they do a bond committee? Or do they not do a bond committee? Or did we, we just looked at the 2020 election and that was it?
Mayor, members of the council. We looked at the two most recent elections, so 2020 and 2019.
Okay. I'm not stuck on the number of people. I think it needs to be, my opinion, Mayor, is that it probably needs to be a little bit larger than it was last time, that we capture a few more opinions. Did we do a for and against on our, did we have that? It says we didn't in 2007, did we in 2020?
Mayor, members of the council. The city, the publicity pamphlet for the 2020 bond questions for the city of Glendale did not have any arguments for or against the bonds.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the council. Excuse me, pardon me for interrupting. Just as a reminder, those letters of support need to come from someone outside the city. So city staff cannot advocate for or against the bonds. So during the process, I sent out several notices to the council and also to the members of the bond committee giving the dates and deadlines for the for and against letters, but we did not ultimately receive any.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. In your research, did you find any common thread for success or for failure? Anything that other cities did that we, any specific thing, any common thread?
Mayor, members of the council. Certainly, the arguments for the bonds, we can see that that's helpful for the success of the bond questions. Also, if you saw for Tempe and Mesa, they also had election signs throughout the city. So there's a bit of some marketing, I think, that was involved. And I think that is helpful for the success of the bond questions. And for Scottsdale, they had a political action committee who, whom they hired, someone to run the election process for them. And then also paid for all the signs. And as Ms. Rio said, city staff or the city cannot advocate yes or no for the bonds. And those things would likely help the success of the bond questions.
Mayor, thank you. So from my point of view, and having looked at the voting data from that election and received some feedback from people, which I requested through my newsletter, it seems to me that what, we had a fine bond committee. The work they did was fine. And what they recommended that we spend, that we get bond authorization on was fine in the dollar amounts that we were asking for. All of that seemed to be fine. But from my point of view, what failed was the campaign side of it. So I'm not sure that we even need a new bond committee or that we need a big bond committee. I think what we need is a campaign committee and perhaps a sizable one that isn't so much, it's not about recommending the dollar amounts or the uses of them. I think we have a fine, you know, we're fine where we were on that. Or if there's any tweaking, it could just be done by the council. But it's the campaign side of it, the messaging, making sure there are four statements in the publicity pamphlet and that the message we put out is on point and is from trusted members or components of our community. And that if we're using any signage or that sort of thing, that it's effective. So that's my sense of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not weighted to any particular number for a bond committee. I think you look at 2007 and 2019. They both had bond committees, but the 2007 bond committee was obviously much larger. And I think that helped in, in terms of there were more people who were willing to sell a positive message, more citizens willing to sell a positive message about the bonds and the effect that they would have on the city. Excuse me. I do agree with Councilmember Turner, rarely, but I do this time. And I think that he's on target in that it wasn't that the bond committee didn't do what it said it needed to do or anything associated with him. I think that campaigning, and I know the city cannot actively campaign, but it can recruit private entities to be the surrogate for the city. I like the idea of a PAC, a political action committee, that works to support the bond question. But the point is, I think that the marketing and the material that was presented was not sufficient to make people aware of what would happen with the expenditure of that bond funding. So I would expect more fulsome explanation of what will happen with the money and a lot more visuals and concepts showing people that this is the result if you approve a particular bond issue. Thank you, Mayor. That's all for now.
Yeah, I basically, I think I agree with everybody. I'm actually going to take a lot of the blame on this one myself for this thing not passing last time. Because when I finally realized everything that was going on, this is the first time I had to deal with a bond as a mayor and realized, well, we're in trouble. I mean, there's nothing positive coming out of this. People aren't hearing the message. They're not finding out what they're going to get out of it. And for some reason, in the back of my mind, I kept waiting for the city to do it. And it finally occurred to me, the city can't do it. Legally can't do it. And what you just talked about, the city can't do that. We, as elected, it's our job, all of us, to get equipped with people that's willing to stand up and fight. And I, when I finally realized that, it was, I think it was too little, too late. I think I raised, I don't know, $50,000 or something a month or so before the end of it. But by then, it was actually too late. The writing was already on the wall. And so I blame myself for that. I should have started that a year early. Shouldn't have waited that long. We shouldn't have had the signs going out, which we got them out. But again, we got them out way too late. So I do agree with everybody. I think the bond committee did a great job. You know, it wasn't their fault. But I think that we need to, I think we need to come up with a plan as elected and tell the bond committee what we're looking for. And then if we have to hire somebody, well, you know what? Let's raise the money and do it. But the city itself can't do that. So I don't want to get the city in trouble. Certainly don't want to create any problems there. But I, again, I'll go back. I don't know as though adding more people to this committee is going to make a positive difference. I'm not unhappy with the job that the last group did, personally.
Thank you, Mayor. And that's the reason I brought this forward as a council item of special interest, because I, and when I brought this up, I take responsibility for not doing everything that I should do. I didn't know what I was supposed to do. I've never been through a bond election before. So, I mean, now we know. And I'm committed to doing a better job this next time around, too. So I feel like it's important to have a bond committee. I feel like we should do that rather than not do that. That's just kind of what I'm thinking. 70 people does sound like a lot. But, you know, when you only have seven, you risk quorum issues and things like that, too. So somewhere in between, I kind of think maybe your idea of five is probably somewhere in the sweet spot. You know, I mean, if we don't end up all of us having five people, then whatever we end up with, somewhere up to five, three to five, whatever we can come up with. You know, I mean, it's not like you, if you can't find five people, then you can say, well, I have four, then, okay. But I think, I feel strongly that we should exceed a bond committee. We need to, I think, engage more with the Chamber of Commerce on this. Absolutely, we need to, you know, be out there asking for endorsements from community leaders. And I'm committed to doing that this time. But I think, Mayor, you're kind of spot on with somewhere in the neighborhood of five, but without it being an actual hard and fast number that everybody has to have five. We may not be able to get five people to commit to it, but that maybe should be our goal. And then we try to come up with five each. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And again, in my opinion, you have a committee that is larger. You engage more of the community by doing that. A very few number on a committee, you have a very few number that are engaged. And you get a lot of people engaged, then they can spread that word out. And I think that would be advantage. But I agree with what's been stated here today, and we just need to do it within the law.
Thank you, Mayor. So I need some clarity, I think, from, probably from the city attorney about... So I need some clarity, I think, probably from the city attorney about the legalities around the bond versus the campaign. So I'm clear that obviously our city staff cannot advocate for or against the bond election, and I'm willing to assume that they can't recruit candidate, or can't recruit members to serve on a bond campaign committee, or anything like that. But if we have a bond committee, like we did last time, that obviously falls under the open meeting laws, and if it's something that the dollar amounts the council may approve, would also fall under the open meeting laws and that sort of thing. But if we have a campaign committee, once the dollar amounts are set and the council has approved them, if there's a separate campaign committee, would we run afoul of the law if members of the council were part of that, and we met and discussed the campaign? With, you know, it's not something the council's going to vote on, because the voting has already occurred to put those on the ballot for the upcoming election. But as far as discussing the campaign, and who ought to be on a campaign committee, and what the messaging should be like, is would we run afoul of the law if we were working together in that, at that point in time? Thank you.
Mayor and council, you've asked a lot of questions, and I'm gonna give you a very definitive answer, but I'm going to take you through a little bit of the analysis. And the question you're asking is in the context of you as a sitting elected official as part of the council. You cannot use city resources to support or oppose the campaign. To the extent that you participated collectively, I believe that that would be a problem, that that would be a violation of law. However, if you were participating as an individual elected official of the City of Glendale, that's an individual question that you, as an elected official, would have to undertake on your own. But to the extent could you participate in something in that regard, I think that is not a problem, because at that point in time, that's you individually that's doing that. That's not the city that's doing it. The distinction that I try to look at is, is that are there city resources that are going to be expended, including utilizing a facility, utilizing staff, sending out reminders, even to the extent of you're utilizing a city-maintained resource for broadcasting of emails. You're now utilizing a city resource, and that is a problem. You don't want to be in that position. But to the extent that you individually, as let's say a candidate for, even as a candidate for election, wanted to participate in something, and you did something individually, that's a different question.
If I understand it, it would not be an issue if we were doing so in our capacities as individual citizens of Glendale, and not using city resources such as copy machines, telephones, email network, or any of that, so long as we could participate to the degree that we chose to on a campaign committee, so long as we didn't cross the line and utilize city resources.
Mayor and council, to the extent that you are acting in a capacity of a citizen, I don't provide you legal advice, and so I can't give you direct legal advice on that, but I can tell you is that you would be acting as an individual citizen in that capacity. And so that would not be a concern of mine.
Okay. So Mayor, I'm not sure that we need another bond committee to do or review the work of our last bond committee. I think that if we do have one, it would be fine to have a small one, and/or just let the council see if there's any changes that need to be made from the last recommendation. But again, I think they were solid. But I think what we actually need is, you know, what the community needs, is a campaign committee that as many of us choose to participate on could, and as many people that we want to bring to it could do as well, and that it'd all be people acting in their individual capacity as citizens or business owners or leaders on a campaign committee. I think that's where we need the, the community would benefit from having large participation. Thank you.
Okay, I need to go to Vice Mayor next, but would there be any reason why anybody would object to asking the former bond committee to come back and do the same job again? Anybody have any problems with that? Apparently no problems with that. Okay, so I think that's what we do. And then my recommendation, if they all agree, we keep the same. If there's people that don't want to participate again, then we replace those individuals. But ask them if they would review the exact same things that they had before. I didn't have a problem with any of those. I don't know about anybody else. I'm not really looking to change it. So that would be the second part of it. And then the third part of it is asking that committee if they in turn would form a fundraising committee and a campaign committee. We shouldn't be doing that as councilmembers, but they can do it. Would you agree?
Mayor, to the extent you're asking me whether or not you can participate individually, that's a question you need to discuss independently. What I'm telling you is that I can't advise you in your citizen capacity.
Yeah, that wasn't the question. The question is that the bond committee form a fundraising committee and a campaign committee. We can ask them that as a council if they would do it, but we can't, we shouldn't and can't as a council, we can as individuals.
The bond committee is a city committee. The answer is no. So so long as it's a city committee, I mean, we don't form committees that become PACs, we don't create, but that's how I understand your question is.
No, my question is that they in turn form a fundraising committee. They on their own do that separately of what we're assigning them to do.
If what you're asking is an individual on their own doing chooses to form a PAC, they have the right to do that.
Correct. Okay. Mr. Yu.
I'm in favor of what you just said, what, let's go back to the original bond committee and have them review, and then we'll move forward.
Mayor, when I met with Kayla Stanfield, I guess it was last week, the organizational, Department of Organizational Performance, we had a discussion about doing a citizen or resident satisfaction survey. And I think, and they're probably planning on doing that. Oops, sorry, too far from this. But I think that might be something we really should do, you know, way out ahead of this, but to kind of get a pulse of the community and find out, you know, what areas are the residents satisfied in, what are they not satisfied in, and what are they thinking about, you know, so we can kind of focus our energy on areas where, you know, our citizens, we know what they're thinking. I don't think we have a real good, I know some cities do that every year. I don't think we've done, as far as I'm aware, a whole lot of surveying of our residents anyway. So I would be interested in finding out the results, so that I think it might be useful information before, at least for us going forward on, if people say, you know, we surveyed the residents and they say the parks are awful, the parks are in terrible condition. Okay, now we can say, we've surveyed the residents, do you want improvements in parks? This is what the residents are asking for. That's, we're going out for bond, for funding for parks. So I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I think it's something they're planning on doing anyway, but I think it might be good, something good to get done before we go, you know, too far down the road with this, to get a pulse of what the residents are thinking, with their satisfaction survey. And I know a lot of cities do do that.
Okay. Final question before we move on. What date would this have to be done by, for them to come up with a new bond? I may have been out if you stated that. Okay, I was out.
That's actually the next slide. But this is the bond election timeline, assuming an election in November of '22. If we utilize the former bond committee, that makes it a little bit easier. But basically, we would appoint or reappoint the committee members September 2021. Committee meetings would be held between October 21 and March of '22. We'd notify the county of the election in April of '22. Public outreach between April 2022 and August 2022, and we would provide updates to the council on a monthly basis.
Okay. In other words, we don't have a lot of time.
No.
Okay. Everybody good? You have what you need?
I believe so. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Okay, item four.
Presentation on the fiscal year 2021-22 Gila River Arena Capital Repairs and Replacement Program.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this afternoon is Michelle Witinko, Director of Field Operations. She'll be assisted by Lisette Camacho, Director of Budget and Finance.
Mayor, members of the council, this presentation is for information only and will cover the fiscal year 2022 Gila River Arena Capital Repair and Replacement Plan. I'll turn over the presentation to Ms. Witinko now.
Thank you, Lisette. Mayor and council, this item is for information only, so we'll not be asking for any consensus on this item. This slide is an exhibit that is attached to your agenda item for tonight's voting meeting. This is a summary of the five recommended projects that we have proposed for this year. The first item is cooling tower replacement. If you remember, in the spring of 2020, we did do a replacement of one of these cooling towers. There are three cooling towers at the arena. These three provide some redundancy, as typically we only need one to two of them running to cool the building. But however, today, if we were playing hockey or had another event in that building, we would be required to run all three. And last week would be a great example, you know. Anything over 100 degrees, we do need to run all three cooling towers to maintain temperature. We have the second of the three programmed for this upcoming fiscal year, and then the final potentially proposed for fiscal year '23. We also have replacement of a chiller. Chillers work in conjunction with the cooling towers, so it takes two components to actually condition the building. This is a total replacement of chiller three. There actually are three chillers in the building, and we're actually going through an assessment of all three today. The next project is a roof replacement. We've actually seen several years now of roof replacements at the arena. It's a phased approach over six years. We were actually able to divide the roof up such that we could do approximately 124,000 of roof a year. We started with the most critical section, the section that was over technology, and that was leaking more than the others, and we prioritized in that way. So over six years, we'll get a completely new roof on the arena. So after this year, we've got two more years of roof replacement for a completely new roof. Next project then is magnetometers. This is a phase over five years. We did start in fiscal year '19 with completion in '24. That's actually six years, but we did miss a year. This past year, we did not do magnetometers. We actually added x-ray machines, which was an NHL requirement for us to actually hold hockey. This program allows us to replace six per year. The current magnetometers are 15 years old. But as they move them outside to allow for the crowds to come in, they do get a lot of wear and tear with the weather. And now there's much better technology, more pinpointed areas, and they're able to move people through faster, pinpointing the areas of concern. The final item is a key scan system. This is electronic access control. Again, old technology, a phased approach to it. We started this in fiscal year '19, and this upcoming year will be our final year of this, to give them complete new access control for the arena. And that's a summary of all the projects we've got proposed, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on these projects.
Councilmember Turner, you're good? Anybody have any question? I guess not. Thank you, Michelle. Want to lead us in?
Council item of special interest, Camelback Ranch Capital Funding.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report, again, will be Michelle Witinko from Field Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Today, I'm joined by Charles Thomas, who's our administrator and knows much more about facilities than I do. So this is our council item of special interest. The goal today is to get council direction on staff presenting the concept and possible strategies to ensure anticipated and unanticipated, next slide, funding for the capital maintenance, repairs, and replacement of assets at Camelback Ranch. As a reminder, Camelback Ranch was constructed in 2008, includes 118,000 square feet of clubhouse space, 13 full ballfields, and three half-ballfields. At the May 11, 2021 council workshop, Councilmember Tomalchov requested that we discuss the benefits of setting aside a fund for capital maintenance, repairs, and replacements of assets at Camelback Ranch. On June 1, 2021, a memorandum was sent to mayor and council in response to that council item of special interest. Staff time for this is estimated at approximately 180 hours, and would require coordination with budget and finance for the funding mechanism. There would be two deliverables with this council item of special interest. Deliverable one would be a council workshop discussion on future capital expenses at Camelback Ranch, and the second one would be a funding plan for such expenses. Mayor, with that, I would be seeking consensus on this council item of special interest.
Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. This was my item of special interest. And my original idea was basically to have a conversation about the recommended items annually. It's gone from, I think, year after year, starting in fiscal year 2020, we were still at $894,000, and now we're up to almost $1.7 million on this annual list of things that were presented with. And my thought was that we scale some of this back, that we're not obligated to do necessarily, and set money aside, and not, that it's available if this repair or this thing needs to be done during this fiscal year, we have the money set aside, but we're not saying, go ahead and spend the money on, you know, all these things this year, that we start setting some of this money aside, five or 600,000 of it aside every year for, to let it grow, because we're gonna need money to address some bigger things, I think, relatively soon. And we're not really planning for that. So, I mean, I don't know how this got basically doubled anyway from fiscal year. I don't even know how much, I think last year it was 1.7. With the pandemic, I honestly don't remember. I don't even have last year's list. But in fiscal year 2020, it was $894,650. This year, it's $1,673,504. So my idea was, I mean, we set aside, we have unplanned repairs, the ECR category of $227,000, and the idea was to scale some of this stuff back and put more money in this, either unplanned repairs or slash capital improvements, and that the money's there if something needs to be done, but we're not necessarily, I mean, some of these other things that were asked for, you know, beer lines, kitchen stuff, the famous $100, $500 chairs, things like that that were asked for that aren't necessarily, I didn't see that on here, hopefully we'll never see that again, but that we are a little more frugal in the things that we're doing out there, but we're setting money aside. We're saying, we're still committing the same amount of money to you, but we're saying, we're gonna set aside $600,000 of this. So that was kind of what I'm thinking. And I did, Mayor, while I have the floor, if I could have, ask a question, because on this year's sheet, under capital replacement upgrades, there's an access layer networks, which is throughout facility for $122,450, and then interior and exterior access points for $167,400. And I'd like to know what those two things are.
Mayor and councilmember, unfortunately, I don't have that list with me. Access points are where you access the network. And I know each of these items and access points, we did run those through both the Attorney's Office and our Innovation and Technology Office for two separate things. One, the Attorney's Office for, was it required per the contract? And then Innovation and Technology, is it due for replacement? Is the price appropriate? Are we getting the best dollar amount? And then is the item something that we would buy internally? Like, is it a good quality product as well? So we do view each item in those ways.
So are we replacing or upgrading the Wi-Fi? Is that what that means? I'm sure.
Mayor and councilmember, Tomalchov, I'm gonna have to get back to you on that item. I don't have that with me right now.
I guess I still don't understand what it is. I guess my concern is, Mayor, if I could, that the facility's getting used, I mean, could, that the facility's getting used. I mean, basically, that we're contracted for spring training, and it's getting used year-round, basically, for, I know for sure, the Chicago minor league operations. You know, when we visited there, I guess it was two years ago, it's getting used a lot more heavily. There's a lot more wear and tear on the facility than I, my, I'm not a lawyer, but that what we anticipated and that we're really obligated for. The wear and tear of something that's being used to run a minor league operation out of with a number of teenagers that I saw running around there creates a lot more wear and tear on everything in that facility, and it's costing the taxpayers money. So I'd like to at least try to work something out where we're saying, "We're going to set money aside, but, you know, try to be more responsible with taking cleats off and not putting your feet up on things and not being so hard on a facility." This is all money that we can't spend on parks and things for our residents. So that's kind of where I'm coming from on that.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Witinko, if I'm hearing correctly, you may not have one in place, and that's what's being requested here, but just with my experience in facilities, it sounds like you're being asked to create or complete a building assessment to identify all the deferred maintenance of capital equipment and probably non-capital equipment. Do you have that currently for that facility?
Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Aldama, several years back, we put together a, you know, four- or five-year plan. We're now reaching towards the end of that plan and probably need to revisit it and come back with a, again, a longer-range capital forecast. We know the, you know, the estimated age of the roof and items like that, but not in the detail that we need to for probably year three and four today.
Thank you, Ms. Witinko. Mayor, so I think what I'm listening to, and that's what it's going to take, but it's, I think our eyes are going to open wide, very wide open, because what you're going to find is you're going to find items that need to be repaired within the next one to two years, two to four years, you know, four to eight years. Then you're going to be into the backlog, and we're probably going to have almost everything backlog, and it's going to cost us millions. So we're going to have to create a deferred maintenance fund that funds that place just by itself. I think we need to do that with every facility, but I look forward to it, but I think it's going to be an eye-opener of how much money we need to put forth for that facility, regardless of who's in there. A roof is going to wear out, the HVAC's going to wear out, the electrical's going to wear out, so is the flooring. And so it sounds like you need a building assessment and a deferred maintenance plan, but then you need to back that up with a budget, and that's where the council comes in to approve those, probably $50 million, just to get those. And then, once we identify them, now we really have to go after it, because we can't identify those things and not put budget towards it. So that's what I'm hearing. Is that correct? Is that what you're being asked to produce?
Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Aldama, the council workshop on the longer-term capital expense projection would have to include the assessment of items that would be coming up.
And then I just want everybody to know that, like I said, regardless of who the tenant is in there, those things are going to wear down, no matter who it is that's in there. I think it's our, unfortunately, it's ours to have to take care of. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not prepared to give definitive direction to separate some of the allocated resources into a separate fund. I need more information. I think when Ms. Witinko brings back the building assessment, as you said, you're reaching the end of the lifespan of the first assessment, you're about to go into another assessment, then I think there's an opportunity for discussion. But until there's more information, I'm not prepared to send a signal that we're going to pull money back and put it in some kind of reserve fund right now. I'd rather wait and receive more information.
Anyone else?
Mayor, thank you. For this whole series of items of special interest that are coming before us today, the goal today is for the council to determine whether or not staff should invest the time and energy into developing a presentation for a future workshop on the topic. Is that correct?
Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Turner, that is correct. We're here today to present the council item of special interest and get council consensus on staff doing this work.
Okay. So I definitely think that it's worthwhile to have staff present, to spend the time and energy developing a presentation on this subject for us to debate at a future workshop. So I concur. You have my consensus towards that.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Witinko, a question from Ms. Witinko. Sounds like we already have one that's coming to an end. You're going to have to create another plan. Is that going to be through a consultant, or is that going to be through your staff?
Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Aldama, we had planned on doing this with staff, and that's the staff hours, 180 staff hours planned, is to go review the items, look back at the prior one, and see what's coming due.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so I guess I'm struggling with Councilmember Tomachoff's thought on putting money aside. If they're asking for a million dollars for us to just randomly think, "Well, we'll give you a half million, but we're going to keep the other half million in case you need it," they shouldn't be asking for the other half million unless they really need it. And I believe that we have money set aside for anything that pops up unexpectedly. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, well, I mean, certainly, the general fund and reserve fund balance of $50 million would be an example. If there was something unanticipated that happened, let's say you had a major piece of equipment that was not planned for replacement or a structural issue come up, the council could, if they wanted to, use that as a resource to make the repairs.
Okay. All right. So you confirmed what I was pretty sure. But again, I really, I don't think putting money aside, deciding that they don't need that will put money aside. We have money aside already. We just have to decide, do we think it's a legitimate ask, and either approve or not approve. And I think that that's really what we should be focused on. I have no problem with your council item of special interest for them to present in the future a detailed workshop. I think all of us need that and want that, and I wholeheartedly agree with you on that. But with setting money aside, I just don't know if that's the right thing.
Okay.
So with the original request, is there any other discussions? Is there consensus on bringing this back to us in a workshop? Okay, yeah. Go ahead.
Council item of special interest, alley gates.
Kind of like a water gate, right?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, this also is a council item of special interest. The goal on this council item of special interest is to get council direction on staff expanding or expanding the gate standards created as part of the alley access control program, as well as developing or recommending funding options. At the May 11, 2021 council workshop, Councilmember Turner requested a council item of special interest regarding the look of alley gates. On June 1, 2021, a memorandum was sent to mayor and council in response to this council item of special interest. And as we have background, the alley access control program was created to manage challenges in residential alleys that have solid waste services, such as health and safety issues from materials being dumped in the alley, illegally dumped material interfering with the operations of the alley, illegal activity, and difficulty of enforcement due to limited traffic and visibility because of the type of material. The concern is that the standard gates developed as part of this program do not always reflect the neighborhood. An example of this would be use of these chain-link gates in areas of the city that may be considered historic. The estimated staff time to do the research and come back with options in terms of the gate standards, as well as funding options, would be approximately 40 hours. And upon consensus from council, the deliverable for this council item of special interest may consist of information on a range of options for consideration, including any financial and operational impacts. And therewith that, I would ask for discussion and consensus.
Well, I do have some questions on this. So we want to have different standard of gates. So in one area, if it's a nicer area, we're going to put in a high-dollar, very expensive gate, and in impoverished area, we're going to put in a cheap chain-link fence. Is that, I know I'm making that overly simplified, but in essence, is that what the question is?
So, Mayor and councilmembers, I probably wouldn't want to make it that simplistic, but yes, currently, our standard today is chain-link fence, and chain-link fence goes up everywhere. This would be to provide other options other than chain-link fence.
Yeah, I remember when this was first brought to us, and I believe it was Councilmember Aldama that had asked for the gates, because they were having a lot of issues. If I'm not mistaken, it's been about six or seven years ago. And I like the idea, but I remember the original bid that was told to us was extreme. It was like $5,000, and I about had a cow when they said that. So here's a question. If we have certain areas that are deserving of a more expensive gate, why wouldn't the council members use their funds and their extra monies that they have to upgrade that particular gate? You know, what I don't want to do is I don't want to put a $5,000 gate up and then have somebody steal the gate. At the same time, a really expensive gate could look so out of place in an area where it doesn't belong, where just as out of place as the chain-link looks in a place where you should have a $5,000 gate. And that's really my question, is wouldn't it be more the responsibility of the individual council member when they have their extra funds, maybe to put it into that, make that decision in their district? Go ahead.
Mayor, if I could do that, I think that's exactly what the special interest was all about, whether that should happen or not. And the thought would be to have staff look and kind of give you an idea of cost differences, and then have that discussion amongst the council and get direction from council as a policy, as how, if the council wanted any difference in the gate standard, how would that be paid for? And we, staff, I thought we'd lay the table for, and show some different gates, some different colors, things of that nature, and the associated cost, and then have a good discussion and give staff policy on how to move forward.
Okay. Discussion?
Mayor, if I might, this was, this is my item of special interest. And just to give you the background, this alley gating program, as was described to us, and I had other council members explain to me they think that this is true, is a voluntary program in the neighborhoods. It's to be done if the neighbors like it, want to do this, close the gates. And the visual appearance of the gate impacts, to some degree, whether neighbors actually want to go ahead with it in certain neighborhoods. A question arose in a neighborhood in my district about providing a different style of gate rather than the chain-link, and I offered to use district improvement funds to pay for the incremental difference between the standard chain-link gate and a, I hate to call it wrought iron, because it really isn't, but what we call wrought iron-type gates now that are more attractive, not unlike the fencing we use here in the civic center courtyards or gates you might see at our schools or places like that. So I was willing to pay the incremental difference out of district improvement funds. Then, and we were well down that road, and then staff decided that, no, this had to be, come back to the council, because the adopted standard in the alley gate program was the chain-link gate. And for some reason, having a council member pay the difference for a gate that the neighborhood wanted wasn't, was going to be an issue, so that's why it's back before you today. I've never known us to approve the council members' district expenditure funds, but apparently, staff is uncomfortable that if they put in, even at the district, the district council district expense, a nicer gate, that somehow they're violating the standard that was approved by the council. So we want to say that chain-links are not our standard, and that if, you know, that's our basis, that's the basis that we began in. And if a district, if an area wants a better one, and the council member can afford it out of the district funds, then that would be a solution. Or we might say, "You know what? Maybe those gates aren't what we want around the city, and as a city, we should pony up for the cost of whatever gate is appropriate for whatever neighborhood it's going in." That's why it's before you today, and the question is, do we want to have a discussion at a future point? But I'm happy to have the discussion today if you want.
Yeah. Well, I mean, to me, it seems pretty simple. I don't know why we wouldn't want to allow the council members to, if they want to pay the extra expense, just do it. It doesn't seem like it should be that big of a deal to me, but...
Thank you, Mayor. Is it a safety issue? I mean, were they, was, I know, I think it's important probably for PD and, you know, be able to see into the alley. So was that what the issue is, or it was literally just the aesthetics?
I would say it was literally the aesthetics, and whether or not it was deviating from some council adopted standard for alley gates, which I don't think we really discussed much what the alley gates would look like when we adopted the program.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't even know if we need to bring it back for another workshop. I think it's fine to let the council members, just save staff time just going forward, saying, "Yes, we have a design, what the city's willing to pay for, and then if somebody, council member's willing to upgrade that for the residents," I don't see why we would object to that. I'm fine with it.
Yeah. Well...
Mayor, if I could, I will raise the point that alleys don't seem to be evenly distributed throughout the city. Some districts have more than others, and therefore, improving those gates would be a drain on district improvement funds for some council members or for some council districts, but not other council districts. So there is value to discussing, you know, do we need to upgrade the gates that we're doing, and should that be a citywide expense as opposed to a district expense? But I make, you know, we can either resolve it today, or we can come back to it.
Yeah. I'm going to go to Mr. Phelps next, and then Councilmember Aldama.
Mayor, members of the council, clearly, this is just, you know, a policy issue, but one thing maybe to consider, and that's, I think, what we would probably do with this item, were to come back in a council item of special interest. It's one thing to pay for the, you know, the initial cost and the upgrade. I think it'd be good for all of us to understand what's the long-term upkeep of that gate cost, because a galvanized fence has a considerably longer lifespan than does a, say, a more of a decorative, and council member returns correctly, not wrought iron, but a more of a decorative gate does have a different longevity. And you may decide that we'll let future councils decide how to maintain those. But I think that was the level of detail that we would come back, is highlight what some options are, so you have maybe a citywide standard for what that, what a decorative gate could look at, and then at least have a full, complete understanding of what the O and M cost would be at some point in time down the road. If that information you don't feel is relevant or valuable, certainly, you can provide direction here today, just to go ahead and allow somebody to use council funds to pay for it. But that, I think that was the intent of staff, was to do a little bit more thorough look and give you a little bit bigger picture of it, and then make your policy decision based on that.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my district is affected the most. I'm the one that brought the original item up and worked with Michelle and her, Ms. Witinko and her staff, to close the alleys. And I monitor the alley program quite often and very significantly. Janet, my office assistant, gets calls, and she filters those out really well. I've only received one single concern with regard to the type of gate, being in a historical area, one and one only. I get more complaints about why the alley was closed without knowledge to us, the residents. So Janet is right now working with Mr. Friedline and his staff to find out the process and the policy we created, and that's missing from today, and that's what should be in here. But as the council member who has a majority of them, I would dislike to see, or that's, I would not want to see a hodgepodge of gates and alleys. And just like you said earlier, most individuals are really excited about having them closed, but if we were to start today going forward, new gates, that you would have a slew of complaints for those, and early in the program, right? I do agree with staff that we created a standard, and it's appropriate to bring it to this council for a workshop to discuss whether or not we want to change it. But I would not be supportive today to start the program again with a different type of gate style and leave the remain, again with a different type of gate style and leave the remain, I just couldn't do that. But I don't want to see a hodgepodge. It's just not going to look good out there if you have gates that are a type of wrought iron or decorative, and then you have these chain links. Look, the chain link looks a little institutional, I get it, but I just want you to know, and maybe I'll get a flurry of calls, but I have not received any but one call about the gate. That is only one. So I will say I'm supportive of having a discussion after you bring back all that information. So you tell us, hey, we went from $5,000 to $15,000 a gate? Yeah, that's probably not going to work. So I, I'm supportive of having staff come back and give us cost on new gates and what, what they would look like and the maintenance of them.
Mayor, thank you. I do agree with Councilmember Aldama. I think this is a, this is a issue that could relate into unintended consequences. If we adopt a policy to put up prettier gates, all the people who have those chain link gates, they're going to be calling and saying, I want one of the upgraded gates as well, and we've opened Pandora's Box. I think Councilmember Aldama does raise one issue, which is notification of people who are having their alleys closed. And perhaps there needs to be a more fulsome discussion about how we go about doing that, and what is the process involved. But I, I'm not in favor of changing the style of gate that is currently being used, because I think it will create more problems than it solves. Thank you, Mayor.
Is, the idea of the gate, is that intended to be seen through? I mean, is that, is that one of the concerns? They want to be able to visually see through it?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that is, that is one of the concerns, is that there needs to be visibility through the gate.
Okay, all right. Well, I don't, I don't think anybody objects to bringing it back in a workshop. We'll, we'll probably all object at that time when you come back, but right now, I think we're all in agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. So would you be, be bringing back, I mean, I don't know how many allegates we already have up of the, of the, just the standard version, and, and then what would, I, if we're going to do it, we would at lea, I would at least like to know, like, if we're going to do it, would we consider replacing the gate, existing gates that are in place, and how much would that cost us? As part of the presentation at least, at least to know that, the answer to that.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, it's, this is good discussion, and I'm trying to frame exactly what the council does want, and that could be appropriate at, at the workshop at the same time, because it sounds like if we just stay with the gate and the styles and the cost, there's going to be plenty of questions outside of that that we won't have answers for. So in, in trying to frame this, well, inventory, existing gates, we, we know that. We'll give you pictorals of what they look like. We'll give you different types of standards, colors, other cities, and, and give you appropriate cost for each of those. And if the council pleases, we can do a quick update, refresher of what the policy is, and how we go about reaching out to the community, and the information, the data we have with reference to who responded, who didn't, and what the percentage of those people that live along the alleys agreed to having, and we, we really, we, we call it access control, because we really don't close the alley per se. We chain the alley gates, and we can daisy chain locks on it to continue to allow people that want access to their backyard to be able to put their lock on and, and go there. So if a refresher is wanted as we present that, when we get to workshop in the fall, just let us know, we'd be glad to do that.
Yeah, and, and again, I, my, my concern, my personal concern, is if you try to come up with one standard, I think it's, I think it's going to be a mess. I just do. I think that the gates need to be, we need to have one price that we're willing to pay, and I think if the council members want to upgrade, that's fine, but to, to put one type of gate in a certain area, I think could be really problematic. It, it, just as much as putting a fancy one in an area that, that fancy doesn't belong, it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. And to put a really cheap one in an area where it should be fancy is going to stick out like a sore thumb. But we've got to be cognizant of, of how people will see that as a drive-by, too. So it, 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 it looks like it's going to be good discussion in a few months.
Thank you, Mayor. And I mean, if it's a, if it's a worthwhile investment to upgrade the way, you know, areas look, I, you know, I think we should consider it. So, I mean, I don't, we don't know how much it is, or how many, or any of that, so I look forward to the discussion. But if it's going to upgrade how, you know, I mean, I don't, I, I would be, you know, depending on the price tag, obviously, but I would be willing to, and I think it'd be nice to upgrade that, the way things look. It does look kind of, as Councilmember Aldama said, institutional to have that type of, it's a good idea, the alley gates were, you know, it keeps people from dumping in there, and I mean, it's a safety thing. There's a lot of good reasons to have these gates in place, but if we can make the areas look better, at least it's on the table for discussion.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just expand that item of interest when you bring it back, if I may, to, to include some of the challenges that we're having, and I'll, I'll remind you about the email we got from an individual who lives along 59th Avenue. If, if you put a gate there, the gentleman can't come through his alley and then get out to 59th Avenue, get off and lock his gate, or vice versa, coming in. So it's really challenging. So we're going to forcibly go over there and put it on, and he's like, it doesn't do me any good. So will you bring those back, how we're going to resolve those, and just expand that a little bit?
Yes, Mayor, council member, city council, I think the, what the next CIOSI is also the potential of bulk item collection in alleys, okay? And we, we would really love to have a, a robust discussion about alleys per se, and the way they're designed, the safety issues within, inside that alley that cause a lot of problems for our drivers. And I think maybe holistically, if the council would like, we could probably pull all of that together and have a good, robust discussion on alley bulk item collection, access control, types of gates. We'll, we'll try to cover as much of these, this issue as possible. As I said, one, one begets the other. As you begin talking about it, it begins to expand, and we'll, we'll do our best to try to frame this, that covers as much, much as possible with reference to the alley program.
My, my final request is, can you get some numbers also? How many places could you put gates? How many, how many places can't you put gates? For, for what you just described?
Just, just a side, that's, that's a very good point, and potentially, we could look at that, and it's possible maybe to move that gate back, you know, another 20 feet, I don't know, so that the property owner can pull outside but not be on the street, be able to go back, lock the gate, and then safely, you know, access. Or is it such that once we've denied access, other than controlled access, perhaps it's the other side of the alley that they should be using instead of that side? I don't know. But we'll, we'll, we'll include that in the discussion also.
Well, I, I thought about that, but I also thought that's, that's the exact place where people are looking to dump when the gates are set back. So then you run into a whole new problem. Okay, we, everybody good with that, bringing it back? Okay, next item.
Council item of special interest, bulk trash collection in gated alleys.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is this, pretty much the same as the last item, but the goal is to get council direction on placement of bulk trash in these gated alleys. The same request was made of Councilmember Attorney at that same workshop on May 11th, 2021. A council item of special interest memo was sent to Mayor and Council on June 1st, 2021. The differences between this item and the prior one would be the discussion here would be on solid waste services. Should they be relocated from the alley once the alley has restricted access? This would take more staff time, as it is not just field operations, it also is transportation in the alleys. It would take a good, robust inventory of the alleys to determine any operational concerns, and come back with a, a good facilitated council workshop discussion on the operational analysis, as well as that financial impact of bulk trash placement in the gated alleys. So upon consensus from council for this item, we would come back with a council workshop discussion on the operational analysis and financial impact of the bulk trash placement in these gated alleys.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I remember clearly when the original item of interest came up, and, and it was approved through the council, that, that was a tough pill to swallow for me, was that those homeowners now would have to have bulk trash in the front. I accepted it and moved on, because I, I think that's what we do. I feel that's what we do citywide. Again, I, I value very much so the, the one concern I received on the gate and the one concern I received on the bulk trash. Again, I've only received one, and I'm, I'm only saying that loudly because I want the council to know that it's not a widespread concern in the district, at least not in my district. It's worthy, it's worth looking into, but I do value the one concern, I only received one on that, too.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, do we have, I thought we had a policy that the bulk trash had to be placed in front of the property anyway, don't we?
Mayor and council members, Councilmember Tomalchov, we have historically placed bulk trash where there's an alley, in the alley, and so we have, we are in the middle of assessing the alleys to determine any operational and those other impacts with it. So it is not a one-size-fits-all currently, where everything has to be placed in a certain location. As with every different neighborhood, and you get down to an individual house, there are individual concerns. You think those houses that, you know, face along 59th Avenue to place bulk trash out into 59th Avenue might be a concern. So we work very frequently with individual homeowners on actual bulk trash placement, and the city code does allow for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Again, I would ask that if we can't decide today that it's okay to keep your bulk trash in the alley, then let's, let's bring it back to a future workshop, as our, for a, quote, more robust discussion.
Everybody good with that? Next.
Council item of special interest, facility maintenance in neighborhoods.
The good news, Mayor and Council, is this is the final item, council item of special interest for today. At the April, the goal of this item is to get council direction on staff completing an amendment to our maintenance and capital asset philosophy to add aesthetics of city-owned building maintenance in residential neighborhoods. So at the April 27th, 2021 council workshop, Councilmember Tomalchov requested a council item of special interest regarding maintenance for those facilities within residential neighborhoods. On June 1st, 2021, a memo was sent to Mayor and Council in response to this. There has been deferred maintenance at city facilities in the past due to limited overall funding, and as funding becomes available, priorities need to be placed on criticality of buildings and current building conditions. The request here is for a mechanism for ranking or accelerating deferred maintenance at those buildings in close proximity to residential properties to help with neighborhood aesthetics. Staff time on this would be, you know, the research of deferred maintenance, prioritizing, and came back with a facilitated discussion. It would be about 60 to 80 hours of staff time. There would be coordination with public facilities, recreation, special events, public safety, and community services as they operate the libraries. And so upon consensus from council, the deliverables from this council item of special interest may consist of an assessment of the facilities needing immediate attention, and a prioritization of capital and O and M improvements to potentially address these items, and then a workshop on operational and financial analysis, providing for increased maintenance in support of exterior aesthetics based upon proximity to residential properties. And there with that, I'll ask for any questions, or then consensus on this item.
Any questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
What, what exactly are we talking about? When I think of facilities in a neighborhood, it might be a fire station or a library, but those are already in different areas of assessment. I know we assess the libraries, I know we obviously assess the fire stations because we have a plan to remodel them over a five or six-year period. So other than fire stations and libraries, what constitutes a facility in a neighborhood?
Mayor and councils, and Councilmember Clark, I think what we're looking at here is when we, when we prioritize capital repairs or O and M repairs, we look at it in terms of the criticality of the building and the, the components of it. So as we look at roof and HVAC, this request here is to look at the, the look of the building. Does it need painting, where that painting may not be, if, lack of painting may not deteriorate the building. So should we accelerate painting for a library compared to like a building on the operations campus, which is internal? So it's just a different ranking mechanism for these buildings, and to see if we can accelerate some of these deferred repair items, or deferred maintenance items on these.
So we're, we're, we're talking about the, the exterior of buildings that we're already assessing for other things, and why can't the exteriors be part of the package of assessment for facilities from this point forward?
Mayor and council members, Councilmember Clark, they are part of the assessment that we do, and that's why the, the actual staff hours is fairly low, at 60 to 80 hours. We currently rank other aspects of the building much higher. So we, we came forward with a roofing program, which had a nice discussion as part of this year's council budget workshops. We came back with an HVAC program. This is a request, should we put together an exterior aesthetics program? And I mentioned, you know, the painting of the building, it might be more than that, it might be landscaping or other things that need to be improved for the appearance of the building, and should we have a ranking for buildings that are in neighborhoods as compared to other buildings?
And, and we simply cannot incorp, without council direction, we cannot incorporate that into the current assessment that we're doing on all city buildings?
Mayor, if I could?
I, I, I mean, I, I understand the need to look at aesthetics.
Councilwoman Clark, Mayor, if I could, I, I, because this is my council item of special interest. So Fire Station 156 is ba, is 60, 60, what is it, 68th Avenue and Deer Valley Road. And it, and it, and I started getting complaints from the neighborhood about the condition of the paint. And, and so I, we checked into it, and it was last, the exterior was last painted in 20, in 2005, and it wasn't scheduled for more painting, exterior painting until 2025. That's once every 20 years. When it, when the building, and, and I took pictures, and, and I'd be happy to show them to you after the meeting, the building was in pretty bad need of being painted, and homeowners in the surrounding community are required to paint every seven to 10 years. And I think it, not just for that reason, but it also says something about the, how the exterior of a building looks that's in a neighborhood, that really, painting, you know, curb appeal is important, and it's, and we shouldn't have to wait until we remodel a facility to paint the exterior up, you know, but don't let the fascia go. Twenty, in 20 years, you probably need to replace the fascia if you don't, you know, fill it and paint it every 10 years or so. So this is just basically on facilities that are within neighborhoods to have a little more concerted effort and a focus and a funding source for keeping them painted, keeping the landscape in shape. And I think it shows, it gives residents a more of a sense of pride in the community also. When you see these pictures of what the paint looked like on Station 156, I, I don't like driving by that and seeing that. I think it says something about the city that we let our facilities fall into that kind of condition and say, well, it's not going to get painted for five more years, because that's when it's getting remodeled. So that's kind of where this came from.
I, I would just say that if it were part of the overall assessment, and if you incorporated this, and if you wanted to give it special attention, when we look at capital improvement program every year and approve what buildings are receiving maintenance, that's fine. But to pull it out separately and to go through an exercise of 60 or 80 hours, you know, and it's like reinventing the wheel, and I, I'm not just sure I see the necessity of performing such an exercise when it can be incorporated into our existing assessment program and, and looked at next capital year. looked at next capital year. And if in your assessment of Station 156, it rises to the level of exterior conditions being horrible, then that would be something you could, would be recommending as part of the overall assessment of that building. Thank you, Mayor.
Right, I want to add something, and I'm going to go to councilmember Aldama. Is this for buildings only? And the reason I ask that is we have several bridges in the city of Glendale, and I've noticed a lot of the bridges, the paint on several of them looks horrible. It just, it's the old turquoise colored that is now so faded that, and so I was just curious if it's going to be for aesthetics on city owned, does it need to be building only or city facility, I don't want to call it facilities, but anything that aesthetically looks bad. I have no problem with rating it and figuring out what's most worthy and should be taken care of quickly, but I'd like to open that up for, it's not just buildings only, but maybe exterior fences or gates going into the water treatment plants or all those type of different things where we all see things that happen that look bad. I have no problem with prioritizing that and then figuring out where do we want to spend our money at. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Your last word was what I was going to say. So there's a lot of buildings that need, that are in disrepair regardless of their location. I can appreciate answering the call from a constituent that there's a bad bill, I get it. I think that's, if it's affordable within the district funds of a council member, that's appropriate. But you said it right. If we were to take, let's just say this building that councilmember Tomachoff is talking about, and we prioritize it and it falls way at the bottom, why would we go do that if we have another building that's higher in priority regardless of its location? So I think what councilmember Clark said is true, is that we need to run all those into a capital either assessment or the budget and process, but it could very well need paint, but it could very well be the lowest level priority, and then there's another building that's not, that's in a facility like the, down by the high school, there's the yard, that needs it first. So I think we're, it's a slippery slope doing that because it could be the lowest priority. So I think you said it right. Prioritize the projects, see where they fall.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more of a, I think, a little bit of a separate policy, part of the CIP, but a separate policy that's really focused more on aesthetics. So we're not, and I think now we basically, we remodel the fire stations every, well, Fire Station 156 was last painted 15 years ago. I think painting every 20 years is probably not the best idea either. We probably should be painting our facilities more often than that anyway, because I think it says something, what we're expressing out to the neighborhood and the people who drive by our buildings and facilities, and paint is one of the least expensive things you can do to improve the look of a building. And I'm not saying just in my district, and I don't think the idea of a council member having to pay to paint a fire station is at all what I'm talking about, councilmember Aldama, that the, you know, what, the people who drive by that, that's a reflection on us and on the city of Glendale. That's what I'm talking about, and that waiting for five more years until the building's eligible, that building or other buildings are eligible for, you know, for their time to be remodeled and updated, that we should at least set some money aside when we do our planning, not this year, but when we do our planning, to address these kinds of things, landscape and things like that in city buildings, to project, you know, a better image to our residents, to other people who are driving through our community. These little kind of things matter, and it's really not a whole lot of money in the grand scheme of things. I think we were talking about maybe a million and a half or $2 million a year allocated basically to focus on aesthetics citywide, and we can include bridges and fences and other things like that. And I think that's what the staff hours are for, is to basically not, conclude this in the major assessment of when we're going to literally upgrade the building and do a major remodel, we're just going to have a list of how can we approve the aesthetics and where should we be spending this money, and we come to some sort of an agreement on doing that sort of thing. That is, I think, a little, a little bit of money to spend that would go a long way in how people think we view our community and when they drive by our facilities, what they think of Glendale when they see a facility that's been freshly painted, the landscape's maybe been replaced because it's old and needs to be replaced and things like that. So this is, you know, would be in my concept as a citywide program, that we focus some money every year on improving aesthetics in city facilities, separate from upgrades and remodels.
If I may, I completely understand the aesthetics, but what I'm trying to say, and I'll say it in a different way, is I'm not going to paint a building when a building elsewhere needs a roof. So I care about aesthetics, but does the council want to have a building repair plan that's based on aesthetics or based on integrity of the building? So structurally, I'm going to fix that before I'm going to paint something. I'm going to change the roof before I paint something. I'm going to change the HVAC and mechanical before I paint, but I get it, councilmember, you're absolutely right. Aesthetics is, that's our curb appeal, so we do have to have something in place, but I'm not going to choose an integrity of a building over the aesthetics, especially if people are occupying the space. But I get it, aesthetics are really important, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to compromise the integrity of a building for aesthetics. So we can do both.
Mayor.
Thank you. I agree with councilmember Aldama. I think this needs to be part of our annual capital improvement plan, and we prioritize. Because if you're saying that building looks awful and needs landscaping, there are 100 other buildings in Glendale that have also had deferred maintenance and haven't been painted or haven't been landscaped in years. It has to be prioritized as to which comes first, and I think that's part of the annual capital improvement plan, and I think that's where it belongs. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I think you're missing the point here. That's exactly what we're talking about, but we're talking about a separate category for, you know, I mean, we can't get to everything every year, but we're talking about having a separate category in our CIP for, I mean, when the painting, even the stuff at Rose Lane when we went there, like, there's a lot of stuff there, I mean, there's stuff all over the city where we say, we don't have the money, and I'm not, nobody's saying, let's not put on roofs and let's not put a, replace HVAC, nobody's saying that. This is an idea of having a separate category in the CIP and saying, what buildings can we make more aesthetically pleasing this year? And have a list of, that's what the staff time's for, is they're going to tell us what the needs are, and then we can put that in the CIP, and we don't have to wait until the building's eligible to be upgraded and remodeled, that that's exactly what we're talking about. It's just a separate category in the CIP based on aesthetics, not to not do other things just to add this into what we're already doing.
Mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you. Having listened to the conversation so far, I think what it comes down to, I don't think we're advocating, or anybody, trying to advocate paying more attention to the aesthetics than the functionality. Obviously, the functionality of the building is of primary importance, but too often we're ignoring the aesthetics, the appearance of a building or a site. If we don't measure it, we won't fix it. Need to include the appearance of our facilities, and that can include buildings, it can include bridges, it can include, you know, whatever, but the appearance is important. Now, I wouldn't suggest that we go out and paint a flagpole that is rusted at the bottom and about to fall over. I don't think anyone else would. But we shouldn't let our flagpoles or our bollards on our streets or our firehouses or our anythings get into such, through just simple neglect or failure to look at them in a critical, constructively critical manner. We shouldn't be letting that go on, and we are letting it go on all over. A recent example, very present to me, is what used to be Fire Station Number One at the corner of Orangewood and 55th Avenue. That landscaping there has been basically non-existent or atrocious for a long time. Somebody's put some effort into that to try to improve the landscaping. That's a good thing, and it sends a message to the neighborhood that, yeah, you know what, we do actually care about how things, how our stuff looks to you. And it's all over the city, and I think if we don't measure it, we're never going to address it. So I support this item of interest.
I guess the one thing I want to state is, if you're watching this thing, the city's not falling apart. I listen to everybody talking, it sounds like our city's falling apart. Aesthetic wise, there's things that we could do that would make it nicer, there's no doubt about that, but I think prioritizing a need is important in so many different levels, whether it's aesthetics or functionality or lifespan or whatever. I think it's a good idea to prioritize and then come back and decide, you know, where we want to go from there. I don't believe that your thought is a bad idea, but at the same time, we as a council then have to come back and figure out where we're going to get the money to pay for it, and that's what we'll have to do next year. So I don't see a downside to this, folks, I really don't. We just have to make the decision, we're going to put money into it. If we are, we need to have a list of what's most important to get done. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate councilmember Turner mentioning the need to fix up the old fire station, but that's similar to the dead trees over at Sowar Ranc that have had no attention, no one's addressed it. So that would be another aesthetic problem that we'd have to deal with. But with that said, I think what councilmember Tomachoff, you're saying, I agree with you. All that sounds to me is a preventive maintenance plan. We have to be proactive in maintaining our buildings. Painting the building isn't just aesthetics, it's called weatherization. If you don't paint on time, you're causing problems to the block or to the metal, whatever the building is made of. So I agree, but I think what we have to do is we have to create a plan, not based on the fact that the building is in the neighborhood, just the fact that it's backlog and it's deferred maintenance. That's going to take them two, three years to do that, and then they're going to bring back, like the mayor suggested, what's it going to cost us? We need $15 million, and how do we divide that up in the next 10, 15 years? So that, I'm okay with that plan. Go out and get every single building, just like we did the fire stations, go out and find them regardless of their location, what is the need? You might find that that building needs it immediately because painting it will be, the painting it will give you aesthetics, but it's also weatherization and keeping the building in its integrity. So I say yes if we're going to do a plan of every building, not just buildings in the neighborhood. Thank you, Mayor.
Turn that off. We've focused a lot of time and energy on code too, on to improve the aesthetics of the community, and I think that's kind of the idea, is that we're going to hold ourselves responsible too, to focus on the aesthetics of the community. And we probably do have a very long list, but this is a way to at least start looking at, you know, what do we need to do, how do we prioritize it, how do we, how do we fund it, how do we manage it through the CIP to, and then get these, just like with pavement, we have to start somewhere. We did the pavement management, we were so far behind, but you just have to, you know, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? We just have to start, we just have to take a bite and start doing it. So I feel like it's well worth it. I think it sends a good message to residents that, I mean, there's, we're, obviously we're behind in a lot of things, but the aesthetics of the community obviously are important to all of us, and with the code changes that we're making to residents, like, we expect you to maintain, you know, a nice looking yard and not, we have to do, hold ourselves to the same standards, so, thank you.
Do you get what you need? Okay. City manager's report.
Mayor, members of council, just two quick items. And we're continuing to get more and more information regarding our recent Live at Murphy Park, and so I want to give you some more detailed information on this. First, we continue to hear really good feedback from our merchants, and that's probably the most important data point, is we do this for our merchants and we continually hear very good feedback. From a financial perspective, we went back and looked at the month of May within the downtown area from 2019, recognizing that 2020 is kind of a tough, with the pandemic, to measure anything by, but sales tax collections in the month of 2021 in May were up, total sales were up about $215,000, represented about a $7,000 increase to sales tax collection. The biggest increase that we saw was obviously in the food and beverage side, but we think that's really a good trend, and so we're very happy about that. We're continuing to now work on our Live at Murphy Park October series, and so we're getting ready to start working with the merchants in terms of talking to them about what's to be expected. And I've asked Jim Burke to come back to the council in September and to kind of walk you through the rest of the FY22 special event season. But again, really good news coming out of that, and we are, we are, work is earned while going towards the Live at Murphy Park in October. Just also want to say that after a tremendous amount of hard work by Mayor Wires, who serves as our Chair of MAG Regional Council, and by Councilman Tomachoff, who serves in our Board of the RPTA, in addition to great support from Ryan Lee and our Public Affairs Team and our Transportation Staff, this, this region is very close now, I believe, on having a, finalizing a new regional transportation plan that will serve as the basis for a Proposition 400 extension that may go in front of the voters prior to 2025. The current plan calls for a 25-year extension of the existing half-cent plan, so it's, instead of being a 20-year plan, it's a 25-year plan, but it's at the same rate. And so with that, what that would do is over the 25 years, that would provide to our region getting almost $1 billion of freeway improvements just within the city limits of Glendale, and over $200 million of arterial improvements. And so those are both significant. Additionally, we'll see an increase in transit funds. We're expected to receive over $9 million in transit funding. So again, a lot of hard work to make sure that the city of Glendale and its citizens were represented in terms of how this regional plan would be allocated back in terms of project lists, and again, wanted to thank both the mayor and councilmember Tomachoff for all the extra work that was put in, and I'm sure if you have any questions, you're more than, they can more than glad to give you an update. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. City attorney's report.
No report, thank you.
Council items of special interest. Council has opportunity to indicate topics that like to have discussed by this council at a future workshop. Councilmember Aldama.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager said downtown Glendale, if you did, that demonstrates that what we're doing in downtown is working, so thank you for that report. I do have an item of interest, Mayor, and staff is already aware of it and they're working on it a bit, but I wanted to make sure we made it public because we had to cancel some of the games here recently. I'm asking that are youth baseball sports be moved from the middle of summer to spring? March, April, May, or April, May? Staff is working on that now, but I wanted to make sure it's an item of interest. We move to prevent our cancellation of games due to the excessive heat, and it seems that we're getting hotter, not cooler. So move summer sports to spring. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have one item. As you know, for the past five years, I have not supported five-year contracts in the procurement process, and I had a discussion with Ms. Rios yesterday, and she said she wouldn't object, so I'm going to take her up on her word. I would like to have a fulsome discussion of the procurement policies and processes that the city uses. And I know we've had informal and workshops, we had one not too long ago by Ms. Rios, and I think councilmembers Tomachoff and Turner and Malnar were there in addition to myself. And I know it's a complicated process, but my concern revolves around things like the annual dollar amount of contracts the city issues every year. I believe it to be, I believe we will find it's an amazing number, and the number of those contracts that are currently issued for four or more years, and that includes, when I say four more years, we often issue contracts for one or two years with the option of renew for up to four years. So when I say five or more years, I'm talking about those kinds of contracts. And I want to have council and the public understand, if this is policy, what is the rationale between, behind that policy, and why we don't do, issue more FPs than we do? How many contracts do we issue every year? Is that one of the reasons that precludes us from proceeding with issuing more city contracts rather than piggybacking off of everybody in the world? So, thank you, Mayor. So thank you, Mayor. That's my only item.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Not today, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, and then all I, all I have is what our city manager just spoke of, the Proposition 400. Today, at the Transportation Policy Committee, it was discussed and voted and was unanimous. Tomorrow is my last day that I chair the executive in our regional. Tomorrow is regional, and we will take a vote on the Prop 400 extension. And I'm not expecting, and knock on wood, but I'm not expecting any problems, but tomorrow we'll find out whether this thing's going to happen or not. But I believe it will. And then the amendment that I made that was accepted unanimous was to give Maricopa County the opportunity to get an additional half-cent sales tax, just like all of the other counties in Arizona. Right now, Maricopa County is the only county that's limited to a half-cent, while all the other counties are, can go up to one full cent. We all recognize that a half-cent is not going to get everything that everybody needs with the cost of construction and land and all the things that are going on. The plan proposed for twenty-five years is the best that we can get. In essence, pretty much everybody sort of dislikes it, but nobody hates it. And I'm a firm believer and have been most of my life that when you're making a deal, if everybody is a little disgruntled and nobody's mad, that's probably as fair of a deal as you're ever going to get. If somebody loves it and somebody hates it, that's not a fair deal. And right now, we have something where everybody likes part of it and they don't like part of it, and it just seems like that's going to be the best we're going to get. So we're paralleling it, we're going to try to go two at the same time, Prop 400 extension with a half-cent for twenty-five years, and at the same time, see if we can't prioritize next year legislation to see if we can't get that additional half-cent. So that's, that's kind of an update where we're at. We won't be coming back to our council meetings until the following month. So I just want to sort of make that report real quick to everybody so you kind of have an idea where we're at. So with that said, I have nothing else to add. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I have a motion in the second, Councilmember Aldama, second, Councilmember Tomachoff, go into executive session, any discussion on a motion hearing, none. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Here's your agenda. Do have this council meetings recessed.